When we motion the amendment.
Okay. Oh, you're okay, okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Ow, that was my knee.
It hurt that?
It hurt. All right, I am ready whenever you are. Earl and is gonna be late.
Earl and's gonna be late. Brian, all right, let me get this. We'll give Brian another minute.
Thank you.
I guess we should just get going.
Good evening, this is the work session for Northfield City Council, April twentieth of two thousand twenty-one. This meeting was properly advertised in accordance with public law nineteen seventy-five, chapter two thirty-one, in the press of Atlantic City on January ninth of this year. Due to social distancing requirements related to COVID nineteen, there are limited seats for in-person attendance by members of the public this evening. For this reason, the meeting is also being presented simultaneously as a remote public meeting, livestreamed using Zoom conferencing service, and in accordance with the governor's executive orders and the Open Public Meetings Act. Zoom meeting participants can dial in by telephone and listen to the proceedings, or they can access the meeting using a web browser and be able to view and listen. Instructions on how members of the public could receive, reserve one of the limited seats, as well as how they can access Zoom have been made available on the municipal website and were published in the Press of Atlantic City. The full text of the public meeting notice has been posted at the entrance to the municipal building and includes Zoom instructions, information on where to find the meeting agenda and relevant documents, as well as instructions on how members of the public could submit comments in advance of tonight's meeting. For those participating via Zoom, all participants will be muted upon entry to the meeting. Web browser participants will not be able to share their screens or see the camera view of anyone other than the host, which is the city of Northfield. Zoom participants wishing to exercise their right to participate during the public comment portion of the meeting should wait until the specific announcement is made to open the public comment period. At this time, one by one, any telephone users will be asked to identify themselves and will be unmuted to permit commentary. For web browser participants, comments or questions may be submitted via the chat function, but will not be acknowledged outside of the designated public comment portion of the meeting. Chat users must also provide his or her name and address for the record in order to be heard. Any written comments submitted in advance will be read aloud and addressed during the public comment portion of tonight's meeting. We do have one such a comment that was submitted, and the individual has advised if they are not participating via Zoom that they would like the comment read. We have a flag salute led by Council President Protem, Deweese, please. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call.
Mr. Deweese.
Yeah.
Mrs. Madden.
Here.
Ms. Genataro.
Here.
Mr. Perry.
Yeah.
Mr. Smith. Mr. Utz.
Here.
Mr. Paulistina.
Present.
Mr. Chow. Mr. President.
As the mayor is not here, we'll obviously skip the mayor's report and move on to the countywide municipal court system. Is there, uh, do we have any documentation for that?
No.
Okay. Would you like to present Mr. Ferguson?
Yes. Yes. Thank you, Mr. Paulistina, and the other members of the council committee for inviting me to make this presentation this evening. I'm pleased to have with me tonight retired Superior Court Judge Mark Sanson, and who's worked very closely with me since the inception of this matter. My office previously forwarded a financial spreadsheet prepared by County Trial Court Administrator Howard Birchfold and Brian Jetter, the Municipal Division Manager for Atlantic County. I will provide a brief overview of the origin of the program, the process that we have followed to date, and our plans for the future. And after I finish, I'll turn the matter over to Judge Sanson for some remarks from him, and then we will take any questions that you may have. This program had its origin from an idea from County Executive Dennis Levinson. County Executive Levinson sent out a letter in late July to all municipal officials concerning the formation of a countywide municipal court system. I was tasked with chairing a committee consisting of interested municipal officials and members of the judiciary. We initially received affirmative responses from thirteen municipal officials who indicated at least a willingness to participate in the discussion. The committee also included members of the judiciary, specifically assignment Judge Julio Mendez, Judge Sanson, the presiding judge of the municipal court in the vicinity, which is Judge Louis Velasco, trial court administrator Howard Birchfold, and the municipal division manager Brian Jetter. We commenced with biweekly meetings in September of two thousand twenty. At some time in October, it was suggested that we form a subcommittee consisting just of municipal officials to discuss matters that would just involve the municipalities. We carried on with that program on a biweekly basis, with the meetings of municipal officials taking place on Tuesdays, and then the, uh, the meeting of the larger group the following day on Wednesdays. Let me just explain briefly what this program would consist of.
That better? Yeah.
Yes.
The plan would call for a, what I've heard was a tripartite agreement. That's an agreement between the county, the court system, and any interested municipalities who would like to join this system. The county's contribution to this process would be providing the site for the central municipal court. And it is proposed that that will be done at the county seat in Maze Landing in the County Government Services Building, which is sometimes referred to as the old criminal courthouse, which is located on Main Street in Maze Landing. The county would be prepared to make capital improvements to that building to provide two fully functioning courts to start out with courtrooms, and a third courtroom that would be used in a lot of cases by the grand jury, but could be converted over to be used should a third courtroom be necessary. The county would also outfit the building with judges' chambers, work areas for the municipal prosecutor and the municipal public defender, and then we would have a fifteen-hundred-square-foot administrative office that would be used by the people who would administer and run the court system. It's proposed that this would be done under county control. Now, at the present time, that's dependent on legislation being passed by the legislature to allow this, because under the current state statutes in New Jersey, while joint courts are permitted, they cannot be under the control of a county. There's only one county municipal court system in the state, and that's in Irving County, and that's been done pursuant to special legislation that was passed a number of years ago. The Senator Steve Sweeney proposed some legislation that would create a joint municipal court system on a pilot basis. When I looked at that legislation, I went to the executive and I said, Denny, I said, this just won't get the job done for us, because it doesn't allow for the court to be under county control. We put together a letter, I proposed some amendments, we sent that to Senator Sweeney, and he was in favor of those amendments. Those amendments have now been introduced into his legislation, and I found out last week in speaking with Kevin Drennan, who is the executive director of the State Senate, that there is now a companion bill in the Assembly that's been introduced, and the plan would call for these, this legislation to go through committees, starting in Earl and Bay. Clear committees invite and to be taken before both chambers in June, and hopefully passed and signed into law by the governor. If that happens, the county could take control of a, of the municipal court system, and the legislation would also provide that operations could commence as early as January two thousand twenty-two. So we have an aggressive agenda here. I told you about the capital improvements that we would be creating. I also drew up a tripartite agreement, a draft agreement, that I, I shared with, with Mayor Chow. And let me just thank Mayor Chow, because he's been very instrumental. He's moved on just about all of the calls from the very inception of this, and has been a big contributor with his ideas and comments. So I want to give a shout out to him, because, uh, you know, he's really trying to advance the cause of this, of this project. The tripartite, tripartite agreement would establish a certain features that would be of assistance to the municipalities to participate. And that is, there would be two significant committees. One would be a governance committee. The governance committee would consist of five representatives that would be allocated on a geographical basis, from the shore towns, mainland towns, from the three largest municipalities, and then a representative from the western towns, so that you would have representatives from all areas of the county. That, that body would, among other things, report back to the other municipalities and will work in conjunction with the court officials and county officials, so that everyone would be involved in the process. The governance committee would also meet in the last quarter of each year with court officials and with county officials to help formulate the budget for the ensuing year. There would also be a, a personnel committee. The personnel committee would also be a five-person committee, again, allocated geographically, and it would be the personnel committee's job to meet with the court officials to determine the, the number of people that would actually be, need to be hired. That would include the judges, municipal prosecutors, municipal public defenders, and the court administrative staff. That committee would also, in conjunction with the courts in the county, would make salary recommendations for their respective positions. Those salary recommendations would then go to the county executive, who would then make final decisions and submit them to the Board of County Commissioners for approval. The whole concept being that these people would then become, you know, who run the courts and be involved would be county employees. It's, it, the, the plan is for municipal prosecutors and municipal public defenders to be independent contractors who would be hired, but would not, not be employees per se of the county. The, at least one of the judges, the judges would have to be, and obviously the court administrative staff would be the county employees, and they would actually run the court system. The, the plan also is important, because, uh, under this plan, it's set up in such a way that the municipalities would keep the revenue that is generated from offenses. For instance, if a Northfield police officer wrote a ticket for speeding, and that matter is adjudicated in the court, the, the, the court costs would stay with the, with the court to be used to offset expenses, but the fine revenue from that offense would come back to the city of Northfield. And so, we, we believe that the town would make out, well, the spreadsheet that was formulated shows that an estimated savings to the city of roughly thirty-three percent, and plus you would be keeping all of that revenue, that revenue would not have to be shared. Whereas in a lot of these other courts, which have gone to other joint court systems, the host court looks to keep all of that revenue. The county wouldn't be doing that, money would flow back to the city of Northfield. Now, there were also concerns raised at certain times by the, the police, by the police chiefs. And Howard Birch told Judge Sanson and I to address the association back on March sixteenth, and we assured them that it's estimated by the administrative office of the courts that the pandemic-induced procedures, which are in place, where a lot of the procedures are done virtually, that roughly eighty to eighty-five percent of the cases are handled virtually, and that would be expected to continue under this program. So that in most cases, except for like a drunk-driving case or a criminal matter that maybe the prosecutor has referred back to the municipality to be handled in municipal court. All other cases, your police officers would testify from their offices here in this building and would not have to go to Maze Landing. This, this program could create a tremendous savings to the municipality, would actually give you revenue that's going to more than offset your contribution to the system, and would also enable you to make better use of your police resources, because the, the security for this plan, we would be working with the Atlantic County Sheriff's Office to provide the security out at the courthouse in Maze Landing, so that your police officers don't have to come and stand guard over municipal proceedings, but can go and, and do the job that you really hired them to do. And that's to be out investigating crime and, and patrolling the streets of the city of Northfield. Plus, it enables municipalities to make better use of their own office space, because you wouldn't have to have people trekking in here to, to have their cases handled. So that's a brief outline of, of the program. I'd now like to, with your permission, to turn it over to Judge Sanson, and then he and I can be prepared to answer any questions that you have. And again, I thank you for your allowing me to speak this evening and for your attention.
Thank you.
Okay, yes, hello, councilman, wonderful people. My name is Mark Sanson. I'm a native of Atlantic County. I practiced law in Atlantic County for approximately thirty years. I was Superior Court Judge for twelve. I worked in every, virtually every division of the Superior Court. I ended up running the recovery court in Maze Landing. I was called before I retired in November, initially by Chief Justice, who asked me if I would become involved in a program to centralize the municipal court in Atlantic County. An effort is going to be made to, to centralize all the courts into various county governments if this legislation passes. And why is this? Why is the Superior Court involved in this particular program? It's great that the taxpayers are going to save a lot of money. That's a tremendous thing, and that's certainly something that courts are not adverse to. However, the paradigm in New Jersey, as you know, and you've heard this next statistic a sickening amount of times, which is there's five hundred and sixty-five municipalities in the state of New Jersey. There's in, there's in excess of four hundred separate municipal courts, which simply does not make economic sense, nor does it make sense from a force, cause of justice. An opportunity was created when we saw what we could do with information technology during the COVID pandemic, which hopefully is now skidding to an end. And that over eighty percent of the cases that are heard in various municipal courts have been heard virtually. And we believe that that can continue, and that that is a model which will save the public a ton of money, will represent an opportunity to attain a greater, a greater dose of, of justice as well. And that's why the Superior Court is involved. The modern consolidated municipal court has some distinctive advantages from a justice standpoint. First, the county is going to provide a centralized and secure court facility, meaning all space, access, and security standards. Secondly, on the outside of the Superior Court of the United States, on over the facade, as you walk in, it says equal justice under the law. We believe that a, that a single, uniform municipal court in Atlantic County will provide for uniformity of justice. I'm not here to, and clearly we're not going to criticize any municipal court. During my thirty years practicing in Atlantic County, I appeared before virtually every municipal court in Atlantic County. Some were certainly better than others, but they were all, they were all above standard. I remember one of my classic moments is spending the years even in Univista Municipal Court trying a drunk-driving case I had described before the end of the year. So I have a lot of memories like that, going to distant locations, at least for me. But we think that uniformity of justice is important, and we think when you have fifteen municipal courts or sixteen municipal courts in, in Atlantic County, it provides for a, for justice that may not be uniform. You may get a better deal in one court than another court. People may seek, seek forums. Also, I'm going to get into some of the programs we're going to be offering at this municipal court. Some of the people that you see in here have profound mental health or addiction problems. And a lot of those people have complaints against them in more than one municipal court. And it takes a lot for these people to go from court to court to court to court to resolve them all and to get some kind of final resolution, which hopefully will lead to treatment in those cases. So we believe that the, the, one of the advantages, uniformity of justice, greater access, more court sessions, sessions. It is estimated that there will be approximately eighty court sessions per month of this centralized municipal court. They will be in the morning, they will be in the noon, and they will be in the night. There will be Saturday or Sunday weekend sessions to accommodate people who have to go to work. Like I said, on many occasions, even in the Northfield Municipal Court, you would show up on court day, there would be a hundred people waiting out in the lobby. I think I'm beeping again, but hopefully they'll go away. And some of those people will get in right away. The ones luckily, generally lucky enough to have lawyers will get in and get out. And lawyers are all belly up to the front to see the prosecutor, see the public defender, see somebody so they can go quickly. But if somebody's there, John Q. Public Unrepresented, they're going to be sitting in the back there until four o'clock in the afternoon, and then sometimes they are not heard that day. So it's a monumental waste of time, particularly for working people, disabled people, who are spending the day in court, when that can be avoided from this program. We're going to have more court sessions, there'll be less waiting time, and cases can be scheduled more quickly. Sometimes, as you've heard, cases have to be put on the agenda. Somebody asks for a postponement, the postponement has to be everybody's convenience, and cases are postponed from month to month to month to month. Statistics are kept on this. The judges then get criticized by the presiding judge, Luke Velasco. But the system itself is so fragmented, when you talk about fourteen or fifteen municipal courts in Atlantic County, it's difficult to keep track of time. Justice delayed is justice denied. One of the points that we're trying to make here is we think we can do, have a better municipal court. And the better municipal court is the reason that the Superior Court has gotten involved. We're going to permit full expansion of access to the courts through technology and remote proceedings for all court users. Cost-effective means a video court, giving court users regular ability to attend court sessions virtually, reducing the need for traffic in most cases. The only cases, and this is what Jim was discussing, the cases such as DUIs, where there's possible penal consequence. In most cases, those cases will have to be heard face-to-face in Maze Landing, because the requirements of the constitutions are requirements for the ability to confront your accuser. But other than those, which are a very small amount, now, I'm not beeping anymore, a small amount of cases, virtual attendance will be possible for the police, your police department, more often witnesses in these cases, but also for the people who are having these cases. Now, there was a very interesting article, I'll step away, maybe that'll help. There was a very interesting article in this Sunday's press about it. What? Oh, it's not me? Somebody else is speaking. All right, am I talking loud enough? Okay?
Yes.
Great. You saw the article about the digital divide, and it was a very interesting article about the state providing massive amounts of computers to kids, really, so they can bridge the digital divide to be able to compete in school or home. You have to have a access to a computer, access to the internet. The Superior Court has committed, through Julio Mendez and Howard Birchfold, who's our trial court administrator, to establish kiosks in every municipality where you want, generally, probably would be here or maybe in another location, where we provide an iPad or a computer and some kind of a separation of a short-some level privacy, where people can utilize the facilities that we will pay for, that we will be providing in Northfield, in Lindblad, in Somerspoint, in Buena, you know, this council, in every municipality, to allow people to bridge that digital divide if they don't have the ability to access a, a, a virtual court. So that's another way that we're drawing money to the county to accommodate this program. Also, one of the things that Jim did not say, the county applied for, and we've got the preliminary, preliminary indication of success, the challenge grant in Department of Community Affairs, so we're accommodating this program. I think it's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars that's for us. So we have got that, that's assured. Plus, also, the Superior Court for a pilot county, which is what we like, Atlantic County, will be, will provide more resources to be able to bridge the, the digital divide, which I think is critical, will be critical under any circumstances, particularly when we're moving into a world where eighty percent of municipal court cases are, eighty-plus percent are going to be handled virtually. This is a new reality. I don't think we're ever going to go back to a place where there's going to be hundreds of people sitting here waiting to go and waiting till four o'clock in the afternoon. I think this, this type of program offers these advantages. We're also going to be improving customer service by sharing resources, having extended hours of operation, morning, noon, and night, and weekends, expanding services to address specialty caseloads. And I'm going to get into that in a second, domestic violence cases, drug treatment cases, and mental health cases. That is critical. A fragmented municipal court system where if we had somebody, Princeton from Montezers, America, to his family services to deal with addiction or with mental health problems, it's hard for them to cover fifteen courts in fifteen different locations at fifteen different times. Also, the Superior Court is committed to have a couple of probation officers, state probation officers, available in this court to assist in municipal court probation, which is difficult to supervise. Without any supervision, there's really no meaningful probation. And that really is the situation as it is now. A consolidated court will also provide towns with this minimum net savings of money, which is, which is a good thing, but not primarily why I am here and why we are here. I want to talk about some of the specific programs that we can, that we can have at this central countywide municipal court, which is, which aren't possible if we are conducting fifteen separate municipal courts in, in Atlantic County. We're going to be able to run a drug court-like program with the county prosecutor. We talked to Damon Tyner, the county prosecutor, to be able to staff it and to obtain probation department and treatment providers who will be present virtually every day at that municipal court session to take people who obviously want treatment, either mental health treatment or, or, or addiction services, which are generally the same people, by the way. I always want to say, as I handled recovery court for five years at the end of my career, how many people in your recovery court have co-occurring mental health problems? My answer was one hundred percent. It is the same phenomenon, they need treatment, they're not getting it on the municipal level. The only way they get it, ironically, is if they're indicted, and they get into the Superior Court system, and then we have to let them into our recovery court. Ironically, now, given the status of criminal justice reform and other decisions that have been made by the Attorney General and the county prosecutor, many cases of simple possession of drugs are not indicted. When I first started here, if you had, you know, three grains of heroin and a place in Alba, if you were indicted, it's indictable. But the county prosecutor, and not just in Atlantic County, but throughout the state, they don't indict those cases. Ironically, those are the addicts that are caught. They're the people who need the most help. They're going to be in municipal court, and right now, they're not getting treatment services. Or if they're getting treatment services, they're not being supervised appropriately, because you need treatment services that are supervised in order for treatment to work. So that will expand our capacity in, in two very, very important areas. And the chief, I saw the chief back there, and he will tell you, the people that are here in your municipal court really need help. Basically, are, are people who have substance abuse issues and people who have mental health issues. Those issues have to be addressed. Why? Because we're a touchy-feely court. No, because if not addressed, they're going to be back. And they're going to be, you know, creating problems for your citizens. They're creating problems with themselves, their self, their, their own life is a living hell, but they kind of share it with everybody else in the community. So treatment is important for these people, defendants in municipal court cases, but also for the community. Another area is domestic violence. We can provide victim services much more easily in special, sort of special sections, sessions of the court that are devoted simply to DV cases, where we can have victim services provided for that specialty caseload. It's a very serious caseload. And a lot of times, these cases are remanded, once again, to municipal courts where they have no resources to provide these services. We would be able to provide these services, and there are service providers who will come. They're not going to go to fifteen places and just sit there, but we can do it with a centralized court. The other thing that I had discussed before is the central location for mental health screening by so, by service providers, development of treatment plans, ability to address all open charges. And as I said, more commonly, I had many cases that were consolidated in front of me as a judge, Superior Court judge, where they had fifteen arrests and had to consolidate them all, it was, it was a nightmare. In municipal court context, you can't handle a case in Northfield if it comes from Lindblad, and you can't, or maybe you guys have a consolidated court, but you, you can't handle. court, but you can't handle it from Absecat, for instance. In the centralized municipal court, there'll be one judge, he'll be able to consolidate everything, handle it all at once, and enormous savings of time and resources for all the municipalities in this state. As I said before, with cost-effective means of video court, we're going to establish a kiosk system, which you are not going to have to pay for. You pay for it by the Superior Court of New Jersey, giving court users regular access, bridging the digital divide, reducing the need for extensive travel, not just for the police, but for people who are living in Northfield and have a hard time getting to May's Landing. They may have a hard time getting to the Northfield Municipal Court, but they're going to have a really hard time. They won't have to go in most cases, unless there's penal consequences and a confrontation clause requires their attendance in court because of that situation. But that's less than fifteen percent of the cases. As I said before, more uniformity in handling cases uniformly, the uniformity is extremely important, and this will be a better way of achieving that goal. We're going to have more court sessions each week, as I said, eighty, up to eighty per month, and regular video sessions, less waiting time, and the ability of probation on-site or compliance review. Treatment is only effective when there is supervision, and we will be better able to do it. Those are the advantages. I'm not being critical of the system the way it is. I think we can do better, and when we have an opportunity, when you can do better, we can save money for the taxpayers at the same time. It's not a very common occurrence, but I think this plan accomplishes both of those ends, which are legitimate ends, for the town, for the town officials of the city of Northfield. Jim and I are here to answer any questions about this program. We've worked long and hard on it, and we think it's a distinct improvement over what's going on now. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And thank you for all that, for the presentation and the work you've been doing. As you said, our mayor's been participating, and he's been relaying information back to us, and we appreciate that hard work. That'll help as many cities in the county that'll want to participate. That said, anyone from council have any questions they'd like to ask the gentleman? Paul?
So first of all, I want to say that all that sounds wonderful, Drug Violence Court and the Drug Court, wow, that's a, that's a, that I really hadn't thought of it, shared court service, that's wonderful. But one thing that called me by surprise was the use of independent contractors for a good percentage of your staff. Did I get that correct? Your administrative staff will be county employees?
The administrative staff will be county employees.
He's moving his phone.
If we have a full-time judge, which is been estimated we will need, then the full-time judge would be paid for by the county. What we're looking at doing is the people who would be the municipal prosecutors or municipal public defenders would be brought in as independent contractors. They would not become county employees, but would have like a service contract, much as they would do now with you here in this municipal court. I'm assuming that the people who prosecute here and the public defender here are not city employees. They're paid for, they're...
They're contractors.
They submit a proposal, and then you have a contract with them, which is renewed on a yearly basis. And that's what we would propose to do there. Would be the people who are the chief judge, and the people who actually run the court system, the court administrator, the deputy court administrator, the people that work on it, the clerks and all, those would be people that would actually be the county employees.
But the others would admit it, just as they do here in the municipalities?
That's correct.
And it would be selected by these, is it by these committees?
The personnel committee would look at resumes, would interview people as necessary, and then would make recommendations for that. Now, your judge, let's, I need to be clear on this, under the state constitution and under statutory law, a municipal court judge in this setting, a joint municipal court, that has to be approved by the governor of the state. So the way that would work is, the personnel committee, again, would interview people, make the recommendations, and then those recommendations, the county executive then would have to then submit the name or names up to the governor, and then the governor gets the final approval on that. Again, the advice you can set at the state senate. To the extent that there's a delay in that process, state law allows the assignment judge of the business, that's Judge Mendez, he could make a temporary appointment of one or more judges, so that if we got up and running and are ready to go in January, and the governor hasn't acted on something yet, then Judge Mendez could take the step to make that temporary appointment or appointments, so that the court can get up and running and function.
And these two, these independent committees, the personnel committee and the other one, what, finance budget, I guess?
The governance committee and personnel committee.
Governance personnel. Who selects the members of that five, those five member committees?
The agreement provides for that to be spaced out geographically. It's proposed that you would have one representative from one of the shore towns, and the agreement defines what the shore towns are. The mainland communities would have a representative, then you'd have one representative from one of the towns in the western part of the county. Again, the agreement talks about what the geographical boundaries and what municipalities are.
Who selects them?
Well...
You do. Either you or me.
Municipals.
So each area, for instance, would get together and decide. So the west would decide who their representative is going to be, what, among councils, I guess, or would it be the mayor's appointment?
Again, that would be something that would be up to the constituent municipalities that join this, to determine, to discuss among themselves. There are recommendations made in here that, at least for purposes of getting the program started, if you look at the agreement, this will be done on a rotational basis, and no municipality could serve on both of those committees at the same time. It would have to be, you know, one, if you weren't able, like, on the governance committee, then say, if Linwood joined, Linwood can be on the personnel committee, but you couldn't be on both committees at the same time. There would be a rotation every two years for that, okay? And then, you know, it's, what I put in the agreement, although this hasn't been finalized yet, is that preference would be given to those municipalities who have been involved in this with us, really from the outset, that they probably should be the ones that should get some preference when selections are being made. But again, that would be up to the constituent municipalities who join, to then determine, and if there's another way you want to allocate those spaces, you know, that would be up to those municipalities to get together and say, hey, you know, we're going to do the selection process differently. And then that would be part of the final agreement that, you know, wants to get the court up and running.
Just adding what Jim said, that's a question, your question is of every, we've now been to seven or eight municipalities, and we have three more this week, I think.
Yes.
That's a question that's asked by everybody. So the reality of it is, the municipalities are going to have to get together and make that big agreement amongst themselves. How did the seventeen eighty-seven, how about with the United States Constitution, by meeting and voting a little bit and making a conclusion? I mean, I agree that that's an issue. Some of the bigger municipalities think that they should have more of a say. Right now, that's not the way it is, if everybody's equal. But that's something that the municipalities are going to have to work out, which is, who's going to sit in the personnel committee? Who's going to get the two-year appointment? Who's going to sit on the governance committee? And how they're going to work that out. Jim, I think, did a really smart thing, by at least making a representative of different geographic areas, the shore, and then middle, the townships, and then the west. Everybody's going to say, if the first time anybody's cut out of that, hey, there's nobody there from Western Atlantic County, nobody here from Eastern Atlantic County. So it's divided up. It's the fairest way that Jim and the committees could think that it could possibly happen. But when you said, now, let's assume Northfield decides and get into it, all the people that are going into it are going to have to have a meeting, and they're going to have to decide how we're going to do it, who's going to start this out. And I think it's something upon which, at least I hope, that you can agree upon.
Very good. Thank you. That's all I have. Thank you so much for your work on this. This is great, great, great time, sir.
I have a question over here.
Yes, very impressive talk, and I certainly learned a lot. I see a lot of positive things as far as consolidation. I just have a few questions. Then, I'm going to leave it pretty basic. How many municipalities are interested right now in Atlantic County, you know?
That's hard to say, but we...
It changes.
It changes, okay.
We got some that give lip service to it, and then others that really, really seem to be committed, you know, and it's, that's why we're, we asked, and I sent the letter around, asking to be invited to come out and...
Seeing eight, ten, or eleven municipalities?
I would think it's got to be at least ten to make this invite.
Ten to make you buy it.
Yeah.
Do you want to do a great example of that, too?
Yeah, that's, that's probably, I would say at least eight. Ten, ten would be, obviously, the more we get, the greater the savings can be.
And let me tell you what I agree. The ones that have said, no, actually, are displeased about it. And we're going to, and it's probably not going to be at the start of this, then I think in two years, they're going to be a part of this.
They can't join.
Yeah, I mean, they're going to have to do it. They can't, they can't, I don't, how do you explain to your taxpayers, if you're paying hundreds of thousands of dollars extra, to have an inferior product just because it's yours? So it's, you know, it's whole, it's the whole home rule versus consolidation argument. And in some cases, you know, home rule is good, but in some cases, where a shared service makes all the sense in the world, you can do more healthy, but it seems that you should consolidate to do that.
Yeah, I think he was talking about a very impressive as far as programs to help build up the community. I have one other question. You mentioned that in the fourth quarter of the year, you were planning on salaries for the following year. Now, will the municipalities be involved in that, or will we just get handed a bill?
Yeah, let me explain. The government's committee is the committee that would meet in the last quarter of the year. That's the plan, the budget for the ensuing year. The personnel committee would meet before the court given gets up and running, and would sit down with the court officials to determine the number of positions we would need, the number of people for each position, and will also come up with a salary recommendation. Now, I'm assuming, you know, the salaries will probably be set for a period of time. I don't think those would necessarily change yearly. Again, you get into all types of things regarding civil service and all like that, and there are a lot of things that we at the county would have to do. Once we get the commitment and get the requisite number of municipalities on board to move forward with this. It's the governance committee that would meet and plan the yearly budget for the ensuing year. The personnel committee would have a lot of its activity going on, actually, before the process formally gets started. Does that make, does that make sense?
Yes, I think so. And then my final thing to say is that legislation is key...
Yes.
...to this. And how confident, you had mentioned a very aggressive timeline as far as getting this passed, so that this can be up and running by twenty twenty-two. How confident are you in this legislation passing?
I can only tell you that it has the blessing, and the very strong blessing, of Senate President Sweeney. I have not spoken to him personally. He did speak personally on a couple of occasions with the county executive.
And also, he's in the press this time.
Yes, and there's articles in the press where he made that statement. I talked to his executive director a week ago, who assures me that they're moving forward with this, and they'll go in front of committees starting the first week of May. And they have now a companion bill, the same bill, but introduced by a, Senator Talapiero is the sponsor of that. So, you know, we believe, you know, I think if you have Senator Sweeney behind this, and of course, there won't be any dispute with the governor, because the governor has a special branch under the Department of Community Affairs that is working on shared services. And we work with those people. In fact, we put in for a challenge grant, which we were told in a meeting that we had two weeks ago by one of the zards in charge of that unit, that our proposal has been accepted, and there'll be a formal announcement shortly, that we'll be getting these grant funds. So I think with all of that moving in that direction, I think there's a very, very good chance that this legislation gets passed.
And the members of the local legislature, they seem to be very, in your perception that they are positive about this?
From what I've been, from what I've been hearing, they are.
I mean, the idea sounds good to you, right? Well, it sounds good to them, too. The model of five hundred, the model of five hundred municipal courts in New Jersey, I guess when there was plenty of money and everybody, you know, wasn't as financially strapped and the taxpayers weren't getting killed. But now, that model is, just doesn't make any sense whatsoever. And I think that that, this is a place, there's a lot of arguments about the home rule in a lot of different areas, mostly involving education, and I'm not thinking, you know, that's, that's, that's it, that's it. And I'm not going, I'm not going there and act, that's a quick way to see this go, this people to death. This is just one proposal. It doesn't involve anything but a municipal court. It's not creeping something or other from consolidation. You have, Northfield has entered into various shared services agreements, and presumably, you will do so in the future. This, what worked your way is the municipal court of Atlantic County. That's it.
Yeah, this is very impressive about the different, the cost effectiveness, the efficiency, the technology, improved cost services, and then especially the programs to help people that need that help. So I'm impressed, I think it's an excellent idea. Thank you for your time.
One additional point that I could make, and that when we addressed the Police Chiefs Association, there, I sensed when we did that back on March sixteenth, that there was some reticence in that, from that association, and rightfully so. I mean, this is a new thing. They want to make sure that what they do is going to be protected. And I invited them at that meeting to appoint representatives from their association to come and sit in on these biweekly meetings, and to share their ideas with us, because that's important. And I know Chief Newman was on that call. And again, Chief, if you want to reach out, again, to your colleagues, I understand that there's some move afoot to name representatives and get them involved. And again, I'll be happy to talk to you anytime. Let me give you a couple of numbers. I'll be happy to speak with any one of you if there are questions that you have. My office number is six oh nine, three, four, three, two, three, one, zero. And I probably will regret doing this, but my cell phone number is six oh nine, eight, nine, two, zero, one, two, one. Now, if I don't pick up when you call, it's because I don't recognize who you are. Just leave a message, and when I get your message, I'll call you back, and we can discuss whatever it is you want to discuss about this program. We want to be transparent. There's nothing hidden in this process, okay? This is something that if we do, the municipalities are going to have buy-in to this system. That's the way it's designed. That's why I set it up this way with these two committees. So again, this will be a true partnership, a true shared service agreement between three separate entities. And when I say three separate entities, I'm counting any of the municipalities together as one component of that, but the county and then the court system. So we think it can work. Again, if there are any other questions, I'll be happy to answer them. If not, I thank you for hearing us out this evening and for allowing us to be here.
Thank you.
I think it was...
Yeah, I apologize for being a little bit tardy. I came right from work. But, and I may have missed something, so I do apologize if any of this is redundant, if I'm asking questions that you already addressed. So I do apologize for that. But we have been hearing for months, and I don't want to speak for everyone, obviously, but I think we're in favor of this in general. Like, the reception to this is, yeah, we would love to see this move forward. We've also been hearing since January that Senator Sweeney is behind this, and we still don't have movement on the bill before then. We would love to see that happen. Obviously, approval of a bill in the state legislature would go a long way towards assuaging the municipalities that this is moving forward, and we could commit to it. So one of the issues, I guess, we have is, and I know you talked about the movement before the committee, things can die in committee all the time. That happens to most bills before legislatures. What's the alternative? Now, we have, in Northfield, we have an agreement with Linwood, and that's expiring at the end of the year, and there's a movement to merge with Hamilton Township. You're probably aware of this. I had mentioned it before in a meeting. So I guess we're looking for kind of more assurances that this is going through. But what's the alternative if, let's say, it doesn't make it out of committee, and it doesn't pass in the assembly, the senate, whatever it might be in the legislature? in the assembly, the senate, whatever it might be in the legislature?
If that were to look hard, uh, regional municipal courts are still allowed, joint municipal courts, we could still have the tripartite agreement with participation from the court system, the county could still supply the, the Maze Landing facility, but in that scenario, there would have to be a lead municipality that would take the lead in this, and the rest of the agreement could stay as it is, and, you know, that, that obviously makes it somewhat more complicated, because we would have to get a single municipality to agree and say, all right, we'll be the lead municipality, and the rest of you, along with the county, will join us. I worked on a alternative agreement, because just in case the legislation doesn't get through, I'm confident that it will get through in the final analysis, but all I can do, all I can do is, is continue to plump forward, push ahead, and try to be as prepared as we can be, and to have people, it might be a good idea if representatives from this body and any citizens here may be in favor of this, like what we're presenting, write to Senator Sweeney, write to Assemblyman Talapiero, write to, uh, Assemblyman Masiyo, uh, and, uh, John Armando and Senator Brown, and, you know, apply the, apply the pressure, I mean, these guys, they listen to their constituents, they really do, particularly with this being an election year, you know, all of those seats are up in the legislature, so, uh, you know, I, I can only control what I can control from my end, and we, we are certainly, uh, I, I'm in touch with Mr. Drennan on at least a weekly basis, and I know the people I've been working with on the DCA, uh, who also attend a lot of these soon meetings that we have, are also applying pressure from their end, so, you know, we're trying to do everything we can, but, you know, the final analysis, that, that process is, is controlled by the senator and the legislators, I, you know, I, other than, uh, people lobbying them and putting pressure on them, there's nothing more I can do about that.
So, a, and I appreciate that, i- in the meantime, let's, let's say it goes through the committee system and the legislature, and it's viewed on favorably, i- is there, you've indicated that you're ready to go by the beginning of the year, how, how confident can we be if it, if it gets approved, like, what's the timeframe? Will the court be ready to go January 1st? And if the legislature waffles and doesn't pass it, and, I, I guess I'm just questioning the timeframe and what the expectation as far as when we can get this done and going?
Well, you know, we, we, we named that date, because when I've been on the calls with the municipal officials, I know Mayor Chow, uh, the mayor of Linwood, Darren Matic, they've been especially vocal, that if we're going to do this, we need to do this sooner rather than later, that's why the timeframe was picked of, of January, January 2022, and why I went back to, uh, the senator's executive director and suggested to him that we need another amendment to the legislation to allow these operations to commence January of 2022, and not later, because I sensed urgency on the part of municipal officials that they want to see this happen, and we will do everything that we can do from the county end to make sure it does happen. I mean, we, we have plans already in place to, uh, most of the capital improvements out there, uh, we believe can be done in-house, because, uh, the courtrooms that are going to be outfitted are courtrooms, they were, they were set up years ago, and that's what the Superior Court, the criminal court functioned out of that courthouse. So, you know, there are obviously upgrades that have to be put in those rooms, chambers and stuff have to be, uh, created in the back, the administrative space has to be created, but, you know, that's not the type of thing that takes, takes a long period of time, you know, we, we feel confident that we would have that building up and ready, uh, and then, you know, the big thing's going to be getting the commitment from the requisite number of municipalities, and then sitting down after you folks have passed resolutions of support, to sit down, go through everything regarding civil service, and push the process forward in making recommendations for hiring and things like that, that, that's where, uh, you know, we're, we're going to have to sit down and really concentrate on this. I'm prepared to do this, this is, uh, you know, I run the county law department with myself, there are eight attorneys, we represent every conceivable portion of county government, so I have a lot on my plate, but this is priority number one, and it's been made a priority by the county executive, and if you know Denny Levinson, usually when Denny Levinson wants something, he gets it, and it's my job to make sure, to the extent that I can, to make sure this happens, so that's where we are.
The only thing that makes me believe, that has the confidence in this, A, it's true, the legislature meets for theoretically nine to ten months, you hear they're off in the summer, but most of the stuff that gets done, gets done around May and June, that's when all the more important legislation passes. The original legislation that was preceded the county's involvement called for just other, other types of changes to be made in, to allow these four, have these five pilot systems. Sweeney changed the legislation, it amended the legislature to make the county to be the lead institution, and they also, uh, originally, in the original legislation, called for at least a year after the bill passed, uh, to institute the court, the reason for the year, the administrative office of courts is the central office entrenched for the entire Superior Court system. They, with their needs were, and they're, they're strongly supporting this as well, and the chief justice is strongly supporting this, this program as well, and he's talked to Senator Sweeney about this, and they both have a vision that this is the right way to go, uh, but there's a lot of equipment, the, the most difficult part of this transition is going to be the computer equipment and the recording equipment, and it's a system called CourtSmart, which is used in Maze Landing, that they're going to install here, which is hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars, which is going to be paid for by the Superior Court system. So, uh, that's the thing that they, they thought would be the long lead item, not the, not the, uh, not the construction of the courtrooms, the courtrooms are there, I mean, I've been there, because I was the election judge for many years, so I used to have to go there at Board of Elections, and there are courtrooms there, uh, when they built the new courthouse in Maze Landing, they, they left it and only the surrogate and clerk were there, and the Board of Elections has some, uh, some functions there as well, but the courtrooms are there, I don't think that's going to be that complicated, the HVA system works, and they need to be upgraded, but it's fine, the computer systems are what's really going to be, I think, the long lead item, but I'm assured it can be done in six months. It isn't, you're right, it's an aggressive schedule, mostly in response to, uh, the municipalities who want to do this, they want to do it now, they don't want to wait a year.
Right. Thank you, I appreciate that, I, I had one other kind of logistics question from the numbers that were given, I just wanted to confirm this for myself, uh, the one column was about revenue, uh, we have the cost to the city, but the last column was revenue, it would be returned to the city?
Yeah, that's correct.
That's correct?
That's correct. So the cost savings are, in your case, thirty-three a third, approximately a third, but there would be additional cost savings if you still get the fine revenue.
All right, thank, I just wanted to confirm that, I thought that was the case.
And I happen to know, and I've heard from talking to Mayor Chow, that if you went, say, with Hamilton Township, um, there would be a set price, and they would take at least part of the revenue. The towns that are with Hamilton out west, they join, Hamilton lets them in for seventy or eighty thousand dollars, but all of the revenue goes, goes to Hamilton, so those city, the towns are not only out of pocket for that amount of money, but they don't gen- generate any revenue from it. Uh, this, this program, the revenue, if, like I said, if a police officer here writes, summons, the person's found guilty, and they're fined like two hundred dollars, only the court costs would stay in the county system, that two hundred dollar penalty would come back to, to the city of Northfield. So, I think it's a win-win situation.
Mr. Ferguson, along those lines, if a defendant is fined, say, a hundred and fifty-seven dollars and thirty-three dollars in court costs in the county system, um, the thirty-three dollars would go to the county, uh, isn't there some component that also goes to the state of New Jersey by, by legislation?
There, there may be, Chris, and I have to, we have, I have to look at it.
There's a split, there's a split, there's a split in the statute. Yeah, my understanding is that there's definitely a split, and I'm not sure that that entire one fifty-seven would come back to the state of Northfield.
The rate you're currently getting, you would continue to get the very same portion, the state gets some, but by statute.
Is that, is that figure contemplated in the handout that you provided to Mayor Chow? That division, in other words, the county's taking this, the state is taking this, and the city ends up with this?
This is the net, this is the net fine revenue, that is, that is, that's a, my, my understanding is, and Howard Burks, I put this together, but, uh, that's collected by the municipal courts, this is really being collected by the municipal court, I know, Chris, I don't know the answer to that question, great question, and it would be, whatever it is, we can find that out from Howard tomorrow.
Okay.
And if you want to call me, uh, I'll give you my number, and I'll let you know tomorrow.
Sure.
Actually, I know where, I know where you are, I'll call you in a second.
Thank you, very much. And then one other question, is, does the enabling legislation speak to terms of appointment for either the prosecutors, public defenders, or judges, and if so, how long is that?
Just, just, I, I knew that Judge Mendez was interested in making that a substantial judge's contract, being a substantial period of time, but I think it's limited to three years in the, in the, in the contemplated statute, Jim, is that accurate?
I believe so.
It's three, it's a three-year appointment.
So, and I think that, I, I mean, I was, I was afraid you were going to say like one year, at this point, every year, you're dealing with a new prosecutor, new public defender.
These committees fighting each other, as who's going to be the judge, and it has to be free, actually, Judge Mendez wanted to make it five years, but the AOC, for whatever reason, wanted to limit it to three.
For the judgeship?
Yeah, for the judgeship.
And do you know about the, uh?
The others are not going to be covered by the statute, that would be up to the committees, but I would, I would, I'm not going to have anything to do with that, but I would argue there should be a determinist, uh, you know, term for the prosecutor, public defender, and, you know, assuming good performance and everything.
Right, a, and I guess just to, I mean, everybody here has experience with our municipal courts, every year you're getting new bids for public defender and prosecutor, and I, I think that might counter the continuity.
But once again, the way this works, you look, have you seen that contract, the, the form of contracts you had split out?
Uh, I, I've seen it, I, I haven't computed.
Um, it contemplates this, this new structure, who's going to make those decisions? It's going to be the municipalities who are going to be making those decisions, except for the judge, which is in the statute as a three-year deal, but the rest of them, if you guys, you know, everybody getting together, it seems to me, municipalities are going to have more commonality amongst themselves with those issues, you have to make a three-year deal, you know, if somebody asks you this, nobody will, I would think it should be the same term, but, uh, the reality of it, that's going to be up to you, it's going to be up to the, I guess, the government, the governance of the personnel committee, I'm not sure what is one line of that.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Just a second, Frank has a.
Um, just a quick question, are the committee members going to be contemplated?
No.
Is, is it going to be hiring, retiring, disciplined, and, uh, will it be done by the county, uh, of the employees?
Well, yeah, I mean, uh, these, some of these people, or actually, all of them, the, the county is a civil service entity, so, uh, those people would have certain civil service protections, like the court administrator and all like that, or even the people who work like the, the violation bureau clerks and whatever, you know, normally under civil service, if they, if they have, if they're classified employees, and civil service will tell us that, then yes, they would have protection, that they could, they could only be, uh, you know, disciplined for, for good cause, for just cause.
Are there union regulations also?
There may be, there may be, I, I, uh, we, again, we have to go through and see how th- these positions are designated in each of the towns that we join, and whether the people in those towns are part of the, part of the union, um, because some there are and some they're not.
Yes, well, thank you for your hard work in the, your presentation.
Thank you, and before I close, I, I saw that the mayor came in, and I would be resistant, uh, Mayor, I mentioned at the outset of the meeting that you've been involved in this process from the very beginning, I, I, I thank, I, I indicated my thanks to you, but now that you're here, I want to personally tell you that you've really been instrumental with this committee, and I thank you.
Thank you, Jim, thank you, Judge.
You've been fighting with Peter Miller every week since, and Peter's resigning now, he's had enough of you.
Yeah.
I have one other question, I would say, I think this is really, I would love to see this coming to fruition, but as of May 1st, you've got seven months, and these are the things that I've picked up since we've been talking, legislation, municipal acceptance, civil service and or union, salaries, hiring, courthouse renovations, building kiosks, computer IT syst-, and, uh, computer systems and IT, that's a lot on your plate, pal.
It is, it is, but you know.
We've got seven months to get it done.
If you, if you don't dream big, sometimes things don't happen, you know, so, you know, if it doesn't happen by January 1st, all municipalities are in, I'll take the blame for it, but, you know.
But we do have a plan B, like, yes, we have a plan B, but I would love to see this coming to fruition, not just for the cost savings, but for all of the projects. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim, thank you, Judge.
All right, um, moving on, uh, mayor's report, would you like to?
Uh, the only.
You skipped you, but you're back now.
Yeah, the only thing I'm, I'm requesting, Council President, I think it'd be, be a little bit easier and expedite, uh, with meeting with, uh, Mr. DeRoso from the county, that a committee, to put a library, uh, concept, that a committee be developed so that we only have to have as minimum number of people, uh, I would make a suggestion that we have the shared service chairman, uh, Brian Smith, and our liaison, Barbara Madden, on the committee to meet with, uh, with myself and with Joey DeRoso, if that's permissible, sir.
Uh, uh, is that, uh, does that work for you and Councilman Madden, Councilman Smith, or would you like your second to take that, or, I mean?
It depends on time. A lot of stuff going on right now, but if, if the time fits, I'll do my best.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, and then we'll.
And I'll get with you to it.
Yeah, we can reserve a sec, uh, whoever the second is, because I know his, his calendar's pretty full at this time of year.
Yeah, uh, the only thing I, I have to say, just some comments, and I apologize for being late, um, you know, I am very proud of this administration and also past administrations as far as Northfield being a standout in shared services and joint services concept here, we've, we've done this for many, many, many years, and I think, uh, we stand out in the county, uh, I firmly believe that the administration court is a win-win situation for everyone in all the municipalities that would be involved, uh, as you already heard this evening, there is a Plan B if the legislation doesn't get, uh, done by Senator Sweeney, uh, so there is a backup, yes, there is a lot of work to be done, but as we start getting more municipalities involved and committed, it becomes a much more, uh, a clearer picture as to the financial aspect and what we need to do in terms of the logistics of creating this joint, uh, administration, but as I said, I firmly believe that this is a win-win situation, and kudos to all the city representatives here and the elected officials for their interest and continued support in these kinds of concepts. Thank you very much, Council President.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, moving on to committee reports, Councilman Perry?
Thank you, Mr. President, uh, the, uh, committee did hold their members, uh, to see if anybody needed the, uh, availability, did the, uh, uh, president shots, and, uh, the information was passed on without one being down, uh, having availability. Um, we have, uh, been in contact with them, and, uh, you know, it went fairly well right now, we've got the opportunity to play some people that have been on the other way to the super zone, and, and hopefully, uh, I've, uh, done it now, um, there's a lot of work going on as far as, uh, the, the, the roads, uh, see if we can stop forward again, um, the, uh, tour is, is not a problem at the same time, but we're still, still looking at the, uh, the system.
Any questions? Okay, Councilman Oats?
I'll be reporting on marijuana during the whole business, uh, I mean, recreational marijuana, other than that, I'll be reporting this time.
Thank you. Councilman Nataro?
Thank you, Mr. President, um, from EMS, um, Tricare had a total of a hundred and twenty-eight dispatches for March, uh, a hundred and twelve calls with patients, uh, eighty-seven transports, six mutual aid calls to EHT, and thankfully, uh, they administered zero NarCam, um, that's always a good thing. Um, I also met with, uh, operations manager, Jess Shaw, uh, among others, um, and, uh, we, uh, we came up with a plan to, to meet on a biweekly basis, uh, when they start their con- And we came up with a plan to meet on a bi-weekly basis when they start their contract via Zoom with, you know, the chief and the fire chief as well. So just to keep things in line, keep, you know, just in case anything happens out there that we need to know about, just to get a handle on it for, you know, the first few months of service. I'm really excited about its beer coming in. They're, they're very excited. They're, they're looking for a very successful year. And they're very happy to serve the town. So it's a good thing. From the fire department, we have replaced the 30-year-old air compressor. The air compressor fills their tanks. It's a pretty neat device, nice and shiny in there. So that's a, that's a nice thing. I'd also like to thank Chief Nixon for his heroism fighting that fire last Friday over in the Hilton Center there, the car fire. He was out there by himself for a little while before he had some help. So it's a good thing we had them on staff. And that's all I have.
And, yeah, thankfully. Councilman Dewey.
Can I, Mr. President?
Oh, yes, pardon.
I apologize. I just wanted to confirm with Mr. Notaro, the EMS, they did confirm, correct, that Northfield will have a rig in town?
That's correct, yeah.
I just wanted the public to be confirmed.
One in each? That's good news.
Housing equipment over there as well. Not 100% sure about personnel, but I would assume so.
Thank you. Councilman Dewey.
Thank you. The four light poles along the bike path have been replaced. And the other thing is, Northfield Little League is painting a new mural on the side of the building with their empty blocks of a new logo. Seven year long, it's going to be the Cardinals, it's going to be, and the star working a little bit. So they have a great year, I guess. That's work being done by volunteers, attorney, attorney, and volunteers.
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, and, and moving on, Councilman Smith.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Little League, as Mr. Dewey just opened, had their season opener. So they, they're underway, the baseball and softball, so we wish them the best. My, my daughter had three hits in her first softball game last night, so I'm quite proud of that. Got cold a little late last night. But anyway, Northfield Community School has restarted, so we're happy to see that they're underway. And I also wanted to echo Councilman Perry in thanking the Bunting Family Pharmacy for offering those vaccines. It's, it's nice to have that in town. And Bunting Family Pharmacy has been a business that has been such a tremendous supporter of the city of Northfield in many different ways. So it's just, it's great to see that they have reached out and that people are able to take advantage of getting the vaccines right here in town. So I want to thank and commend the Bunting Family Pharmacy for being in town and providing that service. And the.
Yeah, I work across the street from there, and I saw Joe running all day. And also, I'd like to thank the Kiwanis. They were helping him out with the paperwork.
Yeah.
It, it was nice to see the community come together. There was a need, everybody wanted, people that needed vaccines, everybody got out. And it was, again, just extremely nice to see everyone come together and get, and achieve the goal. Make sure those vaccines weren't wasted.
Absolutely. And just one final thing I wanted to mention. I wanted to offer my condolences. We had a colleague of mine at Mainland who was in my department, Ms. Lori Ayers, who's a resident of Northfield. Her, her husband, obviously, long-term residence. Her children went through the local school and Mainland Regional. And, you know, she became ill in December and passed away just a couple of weeks ago. She was someone I worked alongside for close to 25 years, and she was retiring this year. And she, she passed away just a couple of weeks ago, so I want to extend my condolences to the family. And I apologize.
Yes, yeah. Hard, be hard to say. Yes, I know, I knew her as well, yeah. Councilwoman Madden.
Yes, for the March Fire Department report, it's 13 toll calls and usual Aprils for the other fires. And I was asked by the, I had something I wanted to read. From the treasurer, Melanie, who is the treasurer of the Isle of Wools Library Board of Trustees in regards to the city council's short decision regarding the shared services with head of the new process. And she asked me if I would read this. Please take into, and also, this means we have a copy of this. Please take into consideration the majority of the library board does not support this initiative as far as shared services in the county library system. And the librarian is cautioning against making the library a part of the county system as well. And here's why. Not only is it not a fiscally sound plan, it will destroy the special culture that exists at the Isle of Wools Library. The library is a unique landmark in our town with a special history that would be corporatized by county merger. The library is a hub of civic engagement that provides timely and relevant content due to the creativity of our local librarian, who does exceptional work with writing grants, initiating programs, and making the library an overall welcoming place. And she is tireless in regard to that. She's able to do this amazing work because she has the freedom to do, to do so, as she is not hindered by corporate hierarchy. And while the county has made a gesture to rehire her, it should not be lost on the council that she may decline. It would be a great loss should she decide that her talents would be, would be stymied within the county system. Furthermore, please consider that the county's offer included a budget proposal for one year only. Naturally, they would give their best offer to encourage the takeover, but what happens the following year and the year after that? The answer is, it's up to them. If another county library needs expensive renovations, I won't feel branch's budget could be on the chopping block. So not only would a merger sanitize a wonderful small-town library, it gives control a little bit. Nothing but promises that our branch will remain funded. So this is, in words of Melanie Brodsky, who is the treasurer of the library. So yes, but I leave this, as you know, this is ongoing, processes ongoing.
Council President, I would only, if I may, just say that a couple of the statements that Councilwoman Mann pointed out by the representative of trustees is not truly accurate. And I think once with the committee that we've established meets with Mr. DeRoso, some of those things can be discussed and express concerns. I can tell you right now that any grants, and I was assured by Mr. DeRoso that any grants would be still at the, at the freedom of the librarian director, whoever that may be, if we were to become part of the county system. So it would not be inhibited whatsoever. I questioned about this concept about corporate hierarchy, if it's been, it's not a good way to go forward on that. But I do question the financial aspect. I, I don't disagree with that. But it's kind of, you know, there's a lot of things in there that were given, at least from the director of our library, that, you know, wasn't all the way, you know, fully. I mean, this is something that there are little things that are not taken into account. So I think until we make a thorough examination and through the committee and through Mr. DeRoso and the library director from the county, I think these facts can be either disputed or could be affirmed. So that's, that's my rationale on that, okay?
Now, would Ms. Ayers, Barbara, and perhaps the treasurer, if you'd be offered a senior committee? Is there anything?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
Would Ms. Brodsky and Barbara, the higher, be offered a senior committee? This committee that will form?
No, I, I'm not asking for the, because this is a, something that's between the elected officials. Certainly, any person on the trustee and, and Mr. President, I'll just say this, that, or from the public, once the committee has had their facts, I mean, they may come back and say to the council, we think we don't want to go forward, and council can make that decision if they want to or not. And the public can come at that time. I think you and I and Mr. Smith will become much better educated as far as to respond to some of these statements, all right? I think it's a little premature at this point in time. I understand and, and then see the expression of concern. But I think it behooves us as a council, and I just spoke just a moment about shared services and joint services, that when these opportunities come forward, that possibly could be favorable for, not only for the public, but also the taxpayers. I think it would due diligence, that's our responsibility or a part of it, would fiduciary responsibilities to look into these things. So that's why, you know, I'm saying at this point, let's take a look at it. If it doesn't come out, fine. If council says, you know, well, you know, we like the idea, but, you know, we have some reservations, but, you know, let's go forward. The people of Northfield, the taxpayers and the voters will make that decision because if we are to go to a county system, it has to be voted by referendum. You know, we don't make the decision. We just make the decision to go forward to the referendum aspect.
And yes, that I needed, I felt that something that I wanted to do is just start working in the, for the election.
Yeah. Absolutely. Yes. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
With regard to financing collections, as, as everyone saw on our agenda tonight, we have our budget to present. Collections, as that goes this parway through the year, in speaking with our CFO, she said we are on, on target. So that, again, we appreciate that from our residents, that, again, in these times, that they've been able to keep up with that. It's amazing. That's all I have from my committees.
Council President, can I just make a comment with regard to budget?
Yes.
And I do apologize to council. I, you know, when we had the initial budget hearings, one of the proposals that I presented to the council was to hire an additional police officer that would complement and try to bring us back to full force here. And I, I heard some of the council concerns that, you know, one of my proposals was to do some promotions and also reinstitute the lieutenant position. And they would. Go ahead, I'm sorry. If I'm out of order?
Well, no, 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 no. I, I think what you're saying is fine so far. Cannot discuss issues of, of specific people's employment, because those people haven't been rice noticed.
Yeah, I'm not talking about any specific person or anything like that. Just the concept of having another officer. And one of the concerns that several council people brought up was, well, we would like to look at that, but right now, you know, we're concerned about the mayor's position, about promotions and the lieutenant. And maybe we can consider that if we didn't have that or the mayor didn't move forward. So my position is this, is that I understand the budget is pretty tight. But we don't know what's going to happen later on in the year, if there's going to be some extra money. I know, obviously, we won't have the crossing guard, the middle shift there. So I will bring it back up. And maybe if council looks favorable and our budget looks favorable, maybe council would consider that position. But I will not go for the promotions as they requested. Thank you. Thank you, Council President.
Okay, moving on to work session. The Zion Road pump station, I believe we have an update on that?
I don't have an update. I know Tommy was working on his proposal to get the subdivision plan underway. And I think he can probably speak to that.
Thank you, Council President. I contacted the planning board secretary. She indicated that we will be responsible as a municipality to pay the escrow fees of $1,000. That's one of the expenses we have to bear. That is for the professionals, for the planning board engineer to review the plans, for the solicitor to draw up the resolution. So she said to me that we need to budget $1,000 for, for the escrow fees. Application fees will be waived. The county will be about $250. So we're looking about $1,250 between escrow fees to the municipality and the county application. Our fees will be about $3,000 to prepare the minor subdivision and present it to the planning board. And I think Mr. Fasenda have to be with, with us at the meeting because he has to represent the municipality as the applicant. So, so I don't know what would be, should be budgeted, but.
I would just build mine in the retainer, or the non-retainer.
Okay. So I mean, so it seems like it's going to be around $5,000 to, to get this thing subdivided, and then we would be owning the property. So.
Yes.
I don't know if I need the council approval to proceed, and how do we go without that at this point?
I'd like to take a vote.
Well, it's money.
Yes.
So. Is this money budgeted somewhere? So Mr. Nasar's authorization to proceed is $3,000?
For, for our services, yes, ma'am.
And then $1,250 for the fees.
And then whatever Mr. Fasenda's fees end up being?
Is that something we can wait till next meeting to make sure we have certification of funds from the CFO?
It's up to the council.
How, how far does that?
Is two weeks going to kill us? I mean.
Does that affect the timeline, really?
No, I mean, it's going to push us back two weeks, but that.
Okay.
Because then we can reduce it to writing and.
That way, we can make sure there's certification of funds from the state, from finance.
All right.
Can we also get Dawn certified, we have the 7,500 budgeted? I think she said we did, but I just wanted to.
Yes.
Okay, the Northfield Avenue, is there any update on the Route 9 drainage?
Yes, sir. I received an email from the NJD DOT last Friday indicating that they have no records on whoever installed that small, or the six-inch pipe. And Mr. Babzar says he contacted the resident engineer, the principal engineer on the project. They have no records when they upgraded that intersection. He requested that we provide them with our design plans and for Northfield Ave. I contacted Public Works, we have, we have no plans. So at this point, the only thing I can do is just get back with them, say we have no design plans. This is an issue we, I'm at standstill with them at this point. They're trying to say they didn't install the line, which I don't think that's a true statement at this point. But not sure how to push.
How it got there.
Yeah, how it got, yeah. I mean, it's in their road, it's, you know, servicing their road. And now they're saying to us, oh, we didn't install it. I mean, they're going back to 2016 or 2015. But I believe this has been installed way before that. It was not done at that time. It was probably done about 20 or 25 years ago. But we have no records, and now we're municipal.
And if it was our install, would we, we would have had to get a, a approval from them to do it?
We have to get a street opening permit, and they have no records of that either. We can't just.
Would there be, if they did it on their, if they were doing their own project, would they have?
No.
They wouldn't have, they wouldn't have to run their own permit to?
No, like us when we installed a drainage, like a problem, we don't get a street opening permit. So they're trying to say it's our responsibility, but definitely it's their responsibility because it's servicing that intersection, they upgraded the intersection. Even I showed the gentleman that on the plans they have, the ASVIT plans, it indicates some work to be done with these inlets. And he's still not, not agreeing with it. So, yeah.
So we're at standstill, we don't, we can't. Is there? What about the contractor that is this, that they would have used at the time?
Well, according to the DOT, when they looked through their records, nobody had installed that pipe, not their contractor at that time. They're just looking at the records from 2016, they're not looking for previous records.
Okay.
And they don't have a previous record. So we're getting to a point that at one point, 20, 25, maybe 30 years ago, somebody installed that line. But I find it hard to believe that a municipality would just go in, open a state highway, and install this pipe. I really have a hard time believing that. So I mean.
And we have no idea when it happened either.
No. But that's causing flooding for our streets, so I don't know if at this point, we should send a letter from the council to the DOT. Putting on notice, I'm not sure where to go with this.
Vandal.
Yeah.
Can I?
Sorry, Councilman Perry.
We do as a municipality, you're suggesting?
Yeah, I'd like to say that you have a problem, your system here needs to be upgraded.
Right.
Because it's a state system. And, you know, basically upgraded.
They indicated that when we had a meeting with the state about the upgrade for Route 9, they showed that area and they showed, you know, flooding problem. I mean, they know about that problem, about that area, it floods. And I'm pretty sure that they are going to upgrade when they do the upgrade to Route 9, but that's probably five, six years down the road. It's nothing's going to happen immediately.
Even if you send it from your department, the state that it needs to be upgraded and there's a problem here, then at least you got a meet the trail, you know, electronic trail with the state that we have this year.
Well, that's already established, Councilman Perry, we already established that there is a problem. And we found out the cause of the problem is a substandard pipe that was installed inside the right of way of the state. It's from a system, they're claiming that it's outside the right of way, which is in Northfield Avenue. Because right of way in that area is only 33 feet wide. And as you see, the homes are like right by the paving, so they're saying it's in your right of way, it's your responsibility, but at this point, I have a line that connecting system in Northfield Avenue to a system in the state highway right of way. So that connection, they're saying they don't know who installed it. And we have no records that anybody from our side installed that drainage pipe.
And how far back did you check on our end, you went all the way back to see?
I contacted Public Works, they said we have no records.
Okay, so we have no record of going all the way back and.
I mean, right.
DOT's only gone back to 16?
The gentleman is checking on 2016, he contacted the contractor, but I explained to him, I said, this goes beyond 2016, I don't think it was done at that time. Might have been done beforehand. And I was trying to establish that in 2016, when they upgraded the intersection with the handicap ramps at that intersection, they showed that system on their plans, they showed that they're doing work to that system. So I was trying to establish that the two inlets in Northfield Avenue belongs to the state, not to us, even they're within our right of way, but they belong to the state because that serviced their highway road. Because the runoff from the road goes into our, on those inlets, and they're claiming they're our inlets, but they're servicing them. So it's like a municipality who put a drainage system on private property, but that still becomes a municipal drainage system. So that's what I was trying to establish with this gentleman, it's not getting anywhere, so.
Is there another, is there another department or another person to?
I'm going to send him an email tomorrow, maybe I should ask him who's his supervisor and then we can get to, at that point, if we get the letter from, Chris can help me with writing a letter to the supervisor, and then we'll just start to go up the chain at this point.
I mean, they can at least go back and do the research.
Okay.
Yeah, if we could do that, can we do that?
I'll contact the gentleman tomorrow, I'll copy Chris, and I think Mr. Dewey's was, and Mr. Perry were on the email, so I'll keep that the same way and then we can move forward with this. All right, thanks.
Thank you. With regard to the next item, the lease and parking at Jackson and Fay. As in our last council meeting, we had our planning board president here. I believe with his, with discussion with him, there's no reason we can't move forward with the lease, that it shouldn't affect the property. And reading all the old documentation, I think we see that there's some upgrades to the property that did not occur. So the parking spaces aren't there, but it doesn't seem as though they're needed. If they go forward with that plan, I imagine then they'll have to get, that their approval was conditioned upon several other items. So I don't believe our lease for this parking affects that. I would say we could move forward with the lease and put this behind us.
I think the approvals they got from the planning and zoning board.
expire.
Require the spaces, so I think that the city is the landlord, I agree, should have been told with the lease agreement.
Thank you.
Is that going to be modified in terms of the number of parking spots? Because like you were saying, it was supposed to be done more, more spaces. So we'll just go based on what we currently have? Yeah, okay. I mean, so we won't have any problems in terms of commitment that we would have to provide the additional spaces.
Their approval was from the, originally from the adjustment board back in 1990. So, but that approval was, the approval to do their expansion was contingent upon bonds for drainage, bonds for performance, so erosion permits and engineer approval. So if they end up going forward, then I believe all those things come into play.
The original lease was with railroad. When the railroad sold to us, we became the landlord.
Right.
Technically, all the lease agreements now with the municipality.
Yeah, I was talking, I was talking to the adjustment board approval, that those other contingencies would still stay in place.
Originally, the approval was given by railroad to that owner at that time, and that was a condition of his own approval. But since it was sold and then now transferred to the city, we're the landlord now. So technically, that agreement has to be modified to recognize the city and that owner at this point in time. I think that the spaces are sufficient, and I think that any upgrades might be needed in the future, absolutely. The fence may be the condition of the parking lot, and it's not paid, it doesn't affect the trust then. But that's what was agreed to originally approved. And I think that there should be a maintenance clause in the agreement that the owner has to maintain it and keep it in operational shape with potholes and stuff like that.
Yeah, because I seen one portion of the fence is already damaged.
Yeah, that's been a long going.
Yeah.
City's responsibility to modify the, you know, the content.
And as far as the parking spots go, there's not been any issues or complaints regarding the parking spots or.
If you go by the 150 feet, I think it was, that takes you to those handouts.
Yes.
But they're separated by the drainage, so you guys be real careful with that.
Well, the drainage, and in the original plan, it does talk to drainage. So that drainage was there when they, in 1990, when they put this in, when they put this in place. Yeah.
So.
I think we should modify the number of spaces.
Well, we never did that when we put. This is about to put the party on, and they never adjusted the lease agreement, it took spaces away.
Correct.
And it's, you know, is the handicap, you don't, it is leased now also.
Not include to just go up to the drainage.
Well, you could not make them have the option to subcontract to the other business there too, that was the clause in the agreement that you could subcontract to the adjacent business. So because of subcontracting the adjacent business, then that will all be dedicated to that property in the corner, the original tenant. I think if the owner is well aware of what we're looking to get to, can understand 100% where we're at at this point in time, and it would be beneficial for him to work with us in the future to make that a viable property and keep it away. This is because it's underutilized right now.
Yeah.
And, but in the future, it's definitely a commercial asset to the community.
So let me ask you this, let's just say the current leaser decides, well, I don't want any business anymore with it. So what do we do then with it?
It has approvals for a second story, which we've never done.
Right.
But the spaces were contingent on providing that approval at that point in time. The approval was given to the property. Technically, you may have to come back into the planning board for final site plan approval. But the lease agreement would be contingent on any expansion of that property, it would be in our lease agreement.
Okay. I agree.
I mean, it would be a detriment to that business not to be able to have these parking spaces. You know, in the future, in the long run, sale of the property.
Right.
If it were reverted to a home or something, that would be different, but he was given, the original sale was giving approvals to have a second story.
Can we discuss this tomorrow?
Yes.
We're not going on this tonight, right?
No.
Yeah, I'd like the opportunity to review some of this stuff again.
Okay.
And try to make.
Okay, well, we'll do that and then hopefully we can come up with something. We'll reconvene in between as a committee and then have something for the next meeting so we can finalize. Thank you. The next item, well, next item is the shared court system, but we've already covered that, I think extensively, do you have anything further?
No, I do not.
Okay.
Thank you.
And the next item is the recreational marijuana, an update from the committee.
Okay.
One second, please.
Excuse me, for those folks in Zoom, Councilman Utz is going to revert to a zoning map that was just added to the agenda on the municipal website. It's part of the work session agenda packet. Go ahead.
It's available online. And we pretty much concurred with what we discussed last week. If we are going to allow recreational marijuana to be sold in our city, that we would restrict it at least in the beginning to the regional commercial zone, which is the blue section on your map. It basically runs from one property before Don't Get Donuts, where W9 is, down to the border of our town with Agro Township along Tilton Road. When Crescent Hill was approved, it's my understanding, the zoning was changed in that particular mall there where True Value Hardware is, to a commercial multifamily zone. Our current recommendation is to exclude that because it's so close to the apartments. For now, we can always revisit this down the road. I don't know how many licenses are going to be issued anyway, it gets healthy, it's not going to look like the Vegas Strip. I think we'll need to be wanted to approve in the beginning and we can sort of see how it goes. And then as far as the classes of recreational marijuana businesses, it's the recommendation to exclude the first two classes, which are cultivator and manufacturing licenses. That really belongs to a large warehouse or a place with more, with more land than Northfield can provide. But as far as a wholesaler license or distributor license, our recommendation that those be included in the ordinance, they garner a 1% revenue on what passes through there. And then the class five is the retail license, and then the delivery is class six, which was, you know, even if we regulated that out, other towns would be allowed to deliver in the local town. And that garners a 2% tax revenue. Additionally, it was recommendation of committee that we limit even the businesses along Tilton Road to be no closer than 500 feet from any residential structure. So that, for the most part, there's not houses that are close along that section of Tilton Road. But it's just to alleviate any burden on homeowners that it happens to be located near those, near that sounding.
They're pushing to others, right? 500 feet? That's a lot. And also the corner, you know, where Silo used to be, Silo shop, they can't. Because the 500, the commercial residential 500.
You know, the advantages of course is the corridor there past, you know, where the gateway to the shore and.
There are many of that, everything on this side.
Potentially create significant revenue for the city of Northfield as well as.
The north side of Tilton Road.
And jobs.
North side of Tilton Road.
So I think it's probably a win-win for the town. And by starting with this limited area, we'll get a chance to try it before we jump on the road.
I'd like to say I thank you and the committee. As, you know, this is difficult process, the one thing is that whether we approve it or not, we're going to have the issues that come along with recreational marijuana, because if it's not in our town, it's going to be everywhere else. And I was reading an article in the press by one of the executive directors of Keep. Can't remember, Ms. Valdeta. And she wrote something in the press and she's in the recovery business. And she said, you'll have the problems, so you should at least have the revenue stream so that you can cover the issues that are going to come to your town.
Well, and I give you a note on that, brought by the committee, that currently smoking is not banned on the light pack. And that would be a separate ordinance, but probably something that we want to consider to ban smoking, certainly it's banned in first of all part now. That we want to consider perhaps a ban in at least municipal properties so that people aren't smoking cigarettes, quite frankly, which are far more addictive. And include marijuana in that ordinance. So that would be separate, separate.
Anyone have any?
I have a couple of things. Again, thank you for the work on this, and I would suggest to take as much time on this as we possibly can. Of course, we don't want to decide in 11th hour and miss the vote, but we definitely want to take time, it's a very sensitive subject. I've polled many people since our last meeting, ironically enough, it's 70/30. So it's kind of following the vote. I know the vote is a little different, you know, the vote was for, you know, decriminalizing marijuana. This is for actually selling in our town, so we need to get that clear. A lot of people are against selling it in our town. Myself, I'm kind of up in the air with it, I do feel that, you know, if other towns are going to do it, we might as well as well. You know, I go back and forth with it, so like I said, it's a sensitive area, let's take all the time we need. And as far as one and two, I don't think that we have the knowledge to rule that out. I think that's something that potentially could be less impact with the same amount of revenue to the city. So I think we need to look at that a little closer too. If we're going to indeed go forward with three, four, five and six, so.
Well, again, you can always re, you can reexamine that issue down the road.
Exactly.
I think there's plenty of cheap warehouse space available in Atlantic County, some of the county property. Because those they can use some new sources for that to do. So, you know, I locate Northfield more as a retail, a retail opportunity than a cultivated, but there are some more buildings, you know, who knows. Theater won't go under and then all of a sudden they want to make a big grow house. But there is, I can tell you firsthand experience from being in Colorado, that there's been a bit associated with the grow house. Barbara mentioned a compliment, a man about the light pollution, et cetera. Most of this is indoors for security reasons, for pest control reasons. It's not outdoors, and there are certainly ventilation systems that can be used to filter out the smell like.
Yeah, yeah.
From these grow houses, I mean, they're, you know, they turn out an incredible amount of this product in a small space.
I agree, and maybe a visit to an area like that that has a grow house to see. I mean, you kind of have to poll some people in that area to see if that's, you know, of course, I don't want that smell in our town, of course.
Well, I've had, I've been in the Lancaster area and they have, it's not cannabis they're growing, but it's hemp. And that emits a significant odor in itself. I mean, it's the same thing, just I guess without the. Without the. So, yeah, so that being said, but again, I assume that's less offensive, but you could smell it. And when the wind blew a certain direction, you could, you can.
Yeah, I assume it has some, you know, code enforcement violations, that sort of thing. You know, the other thing that has to consider by capital is can't buy the planning board, quite frankly, is signage. You know, you know, the typical thing is to recross. But, you know, how, you know, you don't want these places to be attractive. It's like the Joe Campbell syndrome with cigarettes. You want them to be, you know, fairly low-key businesses, but still providing a service for for those that that are interested.
Yes, sir.
Just to to piggyback on focus, the the economy development committee that he heads basically, he was responsible for promoting development of Northfield assets, business, industry, tourism, transportation. I think that, you know, the economic development of the town with your committee would have some type of bearing on that. Where we're looking at the cannabis, the cannabis industry as a whole here. And, you know, this is a commercial growth industry. At this point in time, I think what we're asking for is the, you know, the move forward with the planning board's request to see if zoning is even permitted and eventually approval by the governing body to move forward with that.
And where does medical fall within this at all?
It's going to be a lot more reasonable for somebody to buy it from a from a facility in town without going through oh, it's going to cost you five, $600 in prescriptions. And basically, they could buy it from their own certified, lab-tested facility in town instead of going through doctors. Earl and. $300 some dollars worth of paperwork, they get their licenses for the medical marijuana. And basically, they if they have their card, they can get agro township, they get it and buy it legally and possess it. But it would be a lot more economical, I feel, in town for somebody to medical marijuana, buy it right here from a licensed vendor.
And this, yeah, we're not addressing, we're not, and medical's not addressed in this at all anyway.
What's retail available, I think, you'll see the medical cards will start to start to disappear. If you're back, I think it's 73 months.
Well, I think our.
On the prescription and I think that's expensive. And and already, this is sort of pyramid tax. So it gets taxed every stage of the process. By the time you're done with that and sales tax, you're you're over 14%. And, you know, you you want, I mean, recreational marijuana only puts a dent in organized crime and and and, you know, people say marijuana leads to harder drugs. I say it leads to people that sell harder drugs. So if we don't, if 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 it's overtaxed, it will be, the street will be cheaper.
Yeah.
And you'll you'll negate the benefit of both the revenue and controlling the substance that should be out there.
So you think that one of the problems or possible problems would be organized crime if?
No, I think that's what you're trying to negate. What's one of the things you're trying to, not only to decriminalize and for social justice reasons that, you know, a lot of people end up getting on the wrong side of the law because of small amounts of marijuana. It's just it 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 is just as sports betting was a revenue source for organized crime. Part of what you're going to do is is deprive them of that revenue source. So if if the price point is correct, if it's not overly taxed and and the cultivators can grow it at a price point that's below the street, then you'll 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 deprive the the street of that revenue. And, you know, or so organized crime that brings these drugs in will be deprived of that revenue. And hopefully then, you know, it'll it'll just be the recreational and the legal version that 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 gets taxed. So it's not that we'll attract organized crime. It's that you're trying to defeat organized crime, but if you tax it too much and it's more expensive than the street, then, you know, the street will continue to deprive. And that's happened in in some of the states and stuff that that legalize it. They've overtaxed it and so there's still a thriving illegal marijuana trade that's untaxed. And because there's so many grow facilities, somebody goes out the back door and ends up getting sold on the street. Now it's thriving revenue, but it now now isn't, now it is more accessible to to younger people and you can't, you can't control, you can't control the sale.
Yeah, and and I understand that's going to become a reality. My concern is, you know, if we do retail, allow retail, you know, are there any potential or any problems that the committee sees that could come about?
We we have discussed, there's no smoking, no vaping, no smoking of tobacco, there's smoking of of cannabis in parks, like their municipal properties to go along with that. Now, this this is 2%. The bottom line is we we have to either agree to move forward with regulating and approving cannabis industry sale in Northfield at one of the six categories Mr. Utz spoke of. And then pass them off to the planning board for their approval for which avenue they'd be in and approve.
Okay.
Well, we have to establish ordinance and then we will vote on the ordinance. I mean, if you want to do a straw poll, that's fine to see if there's even more discussing.
They they, but yeah, let's, yeah, let's.
What's the proposed zone again is?
So it's the it's the the blue one on your map.
Okay.
On your map.
Yeah.
Called regional, regional commercial.
It's from the, which street is this?
From Dunkin' Donuts.
Down Tilton Road, all the commercial along there. So it's right around where Dunkin' Donuts.
That's adult housing. A H is adult housing.
Yeah, that's a different blue.
Paul, Paul, did you, did you discuss?
No.
No, we're not doing public just, we're not doing public session at this moment, but we will be shortly.
Did you discuss any distance between homes like in that zone? Okay.
500.
500 feet, okay.
You know, that would leave Hollywood, that would leave them probably in the game. But some of, like, there's some houses closer behind that Dunkin' Donuts and the property there that might be excluded.
And the the apartments is it would be considered?
Right now, you know, again, they were the ones that changed the multi-family commercial. Our current recommendation is to not include that in the in the permit zone. But, you know, that can always be revisited down the road. Again, I don't think many of these licenses are going to be issued anyway, so I don't think it's going to be a big a big deal for a while. But eventually.
Yeah.
My guess is it will catch on and, you know, we just want to.
Agree with the building company also because the change that, I mean, that's what the the person who sued us wanted. So technically, they took it out of the regional commercial and made it multi, multi-use.
Well, and we couldn't, yeah, and we can't, we can't include it because that includes all the residential units in it, so.
Saddle in the course.
Yeah. Well, we can, it can be resi, yeah. All right, let's, I I would say, let's let's take straw polls, see if we want to move ahead with the ordinance. And then we'll be able to at the next meeting have something to to look at and get and go forward. Yes, please. Yes.
So the council's recommend, or I'm sorry, the committee's recommendation is in the RC zone only, not the CMF for classes three through six, including six?
Yeah, because delivery, there's really nothing you can do about it anyway. Agro township can deliver that.
Not closer than 500 feet to any residential zone or structure?
I would think structure. Well, it it isn't it one of the residential.
I would say zone is probably an easier.
Yeah.
Good, that's right. And if we're doing that, we might as well incorporate into the ordinance a ban on smoking. I think it's already prohibited in.
Vaping and cannabis is two different issues. Smoking is one thing, but that's people on the.
What 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 is our position on on the bike path?
There's smoking of any.
Okay.
Cannabis, there's there's vaping and there's no.
Anything else?
That's what we're proposing for the bike path.
And and the park and municipal property.
I think it's already municipal property.
But I don't think it delineates vaping and and cannabis.
Okay.
The state already includes e-cigarettes as smoking, so that's why when we would have court here, people couldn't vape, even though smoking and vaping aren't the same thing. So you can include it, but the state has already recognized that smoking and vaping are the same.
Okay. Okay, so in order to move forward with this and and start to draft this ordinance, Councilman Dewey?
Yeah.
Councilman Perry?
Yes.
Councilman Madden?
Yes.
Councilman Utz?
Yes.
Councilman Smith?
No.
Councilman Nataro?
Yes.
And and I'm a yes. So we'll move forward with the to prepare the ordinance and then we'll discuss the ordinance at the at the next opportunity. Yes, Councilman Dewey?
The Zine Road pump station, that easement, it's a subdivision plant.
Yes, sir.
Does the county have to approve that?
Yes. We have to go to the county and we are going to request that they reduce their right of way to include, to to take our pump station out of the right of way. So the park will get larger by acquiring additional right of way from the county, yes.
Okay, the next item is the grant opportunities. Did you?
Yes, Mr. President, we have a new grant administered by Green Acres. It's called 2021 Urban Parks Grant. And our municipality is classified as impacted community. Based on certain criterias, they listed Northfield as an impacted community. So we'll be able to apply for that grant. It's due, I believe, in in June. So we need to move forward with that and it's a it's a park, a grant to upgrade the Birch Grove Park. So basically, we have two grants we're moving forward with, recreational facilities.
Okay.
This will encompass maybe the playground. This is geared toward not clearing a lot of trees, try to work with what you have. So basically, we will apply for possibly upgrading the the playground. We have additional exercise equipment throughout the park. That grant might not, we might not be able to use this grant because it stated if you clear trees, they would not really look favorably on your grant. They'd rather not minimize clearing. But. Huh? Right, but there's other grants we're applying for different recreational components. Also, I'm going to look into this grant to see if we can upgrade the the walkways. Because some of our areas, anytime it drains a lot, they're underwater. You can't walk around. So I'm not sure if this grant will allow us to upgrade the walkways, add some drainage pipes to a so we can raise the the roadways or the walkways. So whenever it rains, we'll be able to walk through the park without having flooded the areas. So I'm going to look into this grant that just came in, came out last week. So I'll go through it next meeting, I'll bring it to council on what we can use this grant for.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
I haven't went, I didn't go through the whole thing, but just it's administered by Green Acres through the NJDEP.
Does anybody know if you've already had that restriction as far as the green acres?
Which, what restriction?
The green acres, it comes with a lot of restrictions as far as what we.
Oh, yeah, open spaces, yes.
I think if you get into it and and we're obligated forever, then there's a lot of stuff we might want to consider. If that's the case, I mean, I was saying, I want to know if Green Acres, it could be strictly what the municipality is doing in the future.
So similar to the Veterans Park where it's open space and it can't, it has to be passive activities.
It's actually more than that with Green Acres. It could be, you have to provide certain levels of access to people regardless of why they want to use it, signage. Well, Ronnie, we'll have to look at that.
Yeah, we have to look through this. I haven't got a chance to really look through this grant, just came out last week, so.
Mr. President, just.
Yes.
It might be premature, I just in in terms of talking about the improvements that could be made out there. Coincidentally, just a couple of weeks ago, I was at the Cape May Zoo and they have recreation equipment there. That is, I took pictures of it, it was so nice. And with recreation, like like playground equipment for handicapped children as well. And and really, I was just so impressed, I took pictures of the company that put it together because I thought that would be outstanding to to have something like that in our in our park. I I know it's premature, I have to look into it.
Kind of improvements where we'd be requesting grant money for.
Yeah.
Like our upgrade our playground, add the exercise equipment, recreation equipment throughout the park, certain areas like for adults to be able to go out and exercise when the nice, what's nice day outside.
So when we get that grant, I have a company here that I'd like to look at.
Okay.
All right, so.
Okay, moving on. Let's review the regular meeting agenda. Approval of the minutes, Councilman Perry, Councilwoman Madden. On the next resolutions, Mary, do they need to be reseparate, the budgets?
Yes.
Okay. Those next three resolutions, 85, 67B and 67C, Councilman Smith, Councilman Dewey. The other resolutions, that could be by consent, Councilman Utz, Councilman Nataro. Ordinance, Councilwoman Madden, Councilman Smith. Bills, Councilman Dewey, Councilman Perry. And meeting notices, Councilman Nataro. Is there anything on the consent agenda that anyone would like to pull? Payment of bills is Councilman Dewey and Councilman Perry. It's a good thing I wrote it down this time. I'm learning. Okay. All right, moving on, we'll move on to the public session. Meeting is now open to the public. For anyone wishing to speak on any subject, please state your name and address for the record. And we ask that you observe a five-minute time limit per speaker.
Address.
But your your address, sir? Thank you.
You've been in this property over, we have gone down for 14 years. And the inspector, Mike, says, when we came down to build my house, it was a half a million dollars. Okay, he said it wasn't a ball field. Okay, that's fine, it's a basin right next to my house. You guys can go down and look and go down. You later, he turned around and said they could play. A bunch of kids playing hardball, football, I got pictures. And I don't need the aggravation. And plus, right next to it is the bird sanctuary. There's two endangered species birds there. One house, two families are in, they stand there awake. Okay, that I don't like, it's a lot of birds. The chow's safe, it's, I've been in Northfield for years. I want to say one thing about marijuana. I see marijuana in the streets when I was a kid. I'm 75 years old now. People are hoping on high drugs, not by gas pushing. But I'm a part in Northfield. And I've, and another problem is the towns, the towns of Northfield cut trees down. I'm against cutting trees. Every time you look, they cut trees. But the basin is the big part.
Yeah.
I don't want to play in that area, it's a basin. Especially a lot of sand on the street too. You guys have money for street drainage, I'll pay for it. You guys have money for street drainage, I'll pay for it.
Yeah. The monkey's basin from the neighboring, from the other street, we'll have to see who's court. Yeah, that Ridgewood.
My understanding is that basin is maintained by the homeowners association. And I believe we've addressed this before, they have permission, kids have permission as well, but through that, so I don't know.
Excuse me, can I say something on DMW? I live there, own property, and I have to call the police, I don't want to make any comments, and I don't want to call the police. Please call, even further than my house. I have kids standing outside my windows, screaming, sitting in Christmas houses, three weeks ago, okay? I have tapes on my phone.
Okay. If they're thirty-eight dollars a year, I'm not paying.
Here can testify how many times I've called about the problem. I don't want to bother the police, I don't care to bother the police, I pay big taxes back there. But I purchased a lot, I've seen there a city ball dealer and it slipped through my, this only lot. I was here with my builders before I purchased that lot. I wanted to find out if that lot was a ball field, or could it ever be a ball field? Because I don't want it, I just paid two hundred and twenty thousand dollars for the lot. I was insured on the fire payment and then I looked it up myself, because I worked at the title company. That that lot is designated as a basin. It's not designated as a ball field, a baseball field, a soccer field, anything of that nature, okay?
It's just an empty field now.
It's all filled with.
It doesn't matter, if you live there, you wouldn't want to listen to whatever.
I'll speak to you in a time if you don't want to come in.
So that's on your, your subdivision, okay? You, you'll prove the subdivision, that that would be a basin. They ripped everything out where the water goes down, okay? They ripped up the, this, this disc that go down there where the water's supposed to go in. They ripped both fences on one side, fence on the other side, all of them, okay? So I would like something done about this, okay? I really don't want to have to hire a steward, but if I have to, I would. So I'm coming to you on the desk, please.
Councilman, yes?
Dewey's alluded to the private property, isn't that a civil matter?
It would be, yeah. I mean, I, I, that's why I'm not, I, I assume that that's, yeah, the other homeowners associations' property, correct.
If it's private property, I don't know that the city has any jurisdiction over anything other than violations of the underlying subdivision or site plan approvals. And I'm sure the chief could talk to any vandalism or criminal activity that may be taking place. But I don't know that this council has the ability to do anything to stop kids playing on private property.
Well, I consider this to be like a harassment, harassing me, threatening.
That's, that's.
You can file complaints with the police department.
No, I'm going to get my attorney to file against the city because I was lied to. He gave me my original for my house, and he told me it was a basin and it wasn't a ball field, and now I have to live with this? I don't think it's very fair, I would do it.
You know, Council President, and I.
Ma'am, I didn't give you the information.
I, I've been in, just, hold it. Council President, I've been in discussion with the Leonetti's and with our, our code enforcement. And, and this has been a repeated problem, and I understand what they're saying. But the response that I've gotten from Mr. Catalio is that this is private property. The, the responsibility comes under the homeowners association. There's nothing that we, the city, at least this is what I'm being told, we can do because it is, as Councilman Dewey's pointing out, it's, it's a private property. And, you know, somebody can go, maybe the Leonetti's, I don't know if you've done that, go and speak to the homeowners association and, and, and stress the point. But I don't know if you've gotten to that point, but.
No, we did that apart, we did that, we did that well over the year of the past.
I don't need the aggravation, seventy-five years old, okay? I don't need.
And I, I really don't appreciate the fact that I have to call, you know? I've had my doorbell rung, I've had footballs thrown at the side of my house, I have a bag of baseballs at my house, okay? And I'm really getting tired of the kind of bothering the police, they have more important things to do than come to my house. They really do, and I think that you people should step up to the plate, especially when you're zoning by. Told us that it's not a ball field, don't worry about it, go ahead, build that house.
Got a suit.
So I, I mean, I'm just giving you the warning, and that's, I mean, if you don't want to help us out, that's pretty sad.
Aggravation, I'm here.
He should be doing his job, first of all, he should be telling the zoning, he should be telling that association that the fences they put down and the, the stuff they pulled out of the ground should be put back to the right of course. Or that we have a fence along our side that we maintain, that they pull out, every fence that was old there, and they pull them things out, and they're out there like banshees every day, or every other day.
The property is not in compliance with the zoning approvals that were previously granted?
It's not, it's not.
Can I finish? If the property is not in compliance with the zoning approvals that were previously granted, you are correct, Mr. Catalio has the ability to enforce that.
He does.
Well, well, thank you, we'll, we'll, we'll look into it.
Wait, I'm not finished, and I don't mean to be rude, but I gave you two other pictures there, there's a picture of a driveway.
Yes.
Where a guy's pulling his car out and pulling the sand right out into the street. And we asked them to please sweep it up because we have a problem when you, you pave the street, all the stuff comes, lands right in front of my house, all the sand, all that.
Well, you're, yeah, I mean, you're at the end of the street.
Yeah, we're down at the end, but it's just the way the street is, okay? He won't do anything about that, that's the zoning law, okay? He won't do anything, I can't do anything with that.
Well.
Well, it's in this, I think it's in your ordinance, that if, you know, discharging dirt on the street shouldn't be allowed, we're not allowed to do that. Going down the driveway, went to the street.
I think, Council President, what she's referring to is that if a vehicle is parked, is used as a parking area. They can't, it has to be paved or a stone, it, it can't be just used dirt. Because it's a dirt driveway is what you're saying, okay. Well, the things that we can address, as, as our solicitor mentioned, is, is things that are zoning issues. Children playing on public, on, on, on a piece of public land, or private land that is, I'm sorry, if it was public land, then we'd have. But, that being said, we'll direct, we'll, we'll address what we're able to address. And, and hope, and hopefully, and hopefully, we can come to a resolution and hopefully that the children will, you know, stop throwing balls at the house. It's a matter of being good neighbors to you.
Okay, I shouldn't have to leave the house and hear that noise, okay? That screaming and crying.
No, I, I coached, I coached baseball, I know what it sounds like.
Oh, yeah, it's funny, isn't it?
No, I'm telling you, I, I don't, I don't want to.
Recognize as children's.
I do too, I do too.
So we'll, we'll address the items that we can address.
Oh, you live, oh, you're the one who told them they could play there.
I know, I just thought that if you go and walk through the road, that would hurt.
I understand, he told me, the councilman can't tell me.
Okay, we, we.
The councilman said we could play here.
That, that wasn't me.
Uh, somebody had a meeting here, and I must have been here.
Okay, we're, we will, we will address everything we can. As, as I.
You're in the barn, Alice, you're in danger.
Yeah, no one takes care of that.
Okay.
Are you in charge of that bird sanctuary in back?
Yes, okay, thank you, that's. I'm sorry, we have to move on.
That's why you have kids pulling down the street drinking in the backyard.
Excuse me, we have to move on. Mr. Leonetti, please, we have to move on, we, I, we, we need, we need to move on to the meeting. We asked that you, that you recognize the five-minute limit.
I don't want any more recognized, I can be here for four hours. You have this guy, you're going to go in for four hours, okay?
We, this is the public session, you have five minutes.
I don't want to block you back, I don't want a ball field there, and that's what I pay for, okay? So figure it out.
Thank you, sir.
What is her address, please?
Oxford Circle. What was he, what was your address again, I'm sorry?
Oxford Circle.
Your house number?
It's name and address for the record, I mean.
Yes, it's name and address for the record.
Um, well, this one changes, I have something prepared here, but Mr. Paulistino has said in the Sentinel that, and I agree with you when you said this about taking, about banning the cannabis business now and possibly reconsidering it. Not doing anything or rushing into the law for this without knowing all the details of this law. And being locked into it for five years is a long time and something the city may regret. Yes, it does seem like an additional source of revenue for the city, but at what cost? Just because something is legal doesn't mean it is safe. Marijuana is still a drug with possible addictive qualities, and like any drug, developing a tolerance to it is possible. Which means having to take more and more of a drug to get the same effect as before. Examples of two other legal drugs, nicotine and cigarettes and opioids for pain, which people get addicted to and are legal. Is having cannabis business the image the small town of Northfield wants to have? The way our city is laid out, and I see this map here, we do have businesses interspersed throughout the city, throughout neighborhoods. And where you're proposing doing this, I see Birch Grove Park backs up to it, is that correct? Is there an area there that possibly in future could be developed in the homes? Not now, but in the future.
No, 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 Birch Grove is.
Well, that's what I'm saying, is this whole green area.
That's, that's all the back.
The back's up to this blue area.
Yeah, that won't ever be developed into.
That won't, okay. Anyway, I'll continue with this. The way our city is laid out, businesses are in close proximity to neighborhoods. By allowing cannabis businesses only on the outskirts of the city, does this set a precedence for allowing it to possibly be somewhere else closer to a neighborhood? Or within so many feet of a school? I'm not exactly, I am sure now where you're talking about, so that's changed. What other drugs could become legalized and expanded into these operations businesses? I don't say this lightly, back in the eighties and nineties, the push was just say no to drugs and teaching refusal skills to our students. It didn't seem likely back then that pot would ever become legal, but it, it is now. Most of the time cannabis is smoked like a cigarette. Since it is legal, what someone does in their own home or property is their business. Secondhand smoke has been proven to hurt the non-spoker and becomes the public's business. Allowing smoking cannabis in public would mean possibly someone standing on the sidewalk, outside your house, smoking while you have your windows open, trying to get some fresh air. Or being out for a walk on the bike after, you said that's not going to happen. Is it possible that you can look for tax revenue somewhere else? Please act in the health and safety and interest of Northfield residents. And ban the sale and manufacture of cannabis and prohibit its, its smoking and vaping in all public places. The small town of Northfield is currently nicknamed, as you said, the gateway to the shore. Do we want the image of it being the gateway to possibly disrupting health? It's something I feel strongly about. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone on Zoom?
Yes, hang on. Mr. Gary, I've given you an unmute request, can you hear me?
I can hear you, can you hear me?
Yes, if you would state your name and address for the record, please.
Bill Gary, to, to St. James Place. I guess I have a question for council, or probably more geared towards the engineer. There's, there's an issue with collecting water on the southwest corner of Pine and St. James Place. It just get, it continuously gets worse and worse, and the street's starting to crumble into this holes, there's two of them. Children like to play in it, ride their bikes through it, there's a lot of debris in there. My concern coming up, this summer is going to be the health hazard as the water sits there. We haven't, you know, we got rain the other day, today, there's still six or eight inches of water in a area that's probably twelve-foot in diameter, maybe a little bit larger. And now I'm concerned with the breeding of mosquitoes and, of course, the onset of West Nile. I brought it up to the city engineer, and he told me there was something that was going to be done, and they did Fay Avenue. That didn't get done. I'm wondering if it's still on the table, if there's, if there's a plan to take care of it. Do we have to wait for a grant? Or do I need to call the health department to have them do something about it before we start a breeding ground of mosquitoes there?
Do you have any, are you aware of that?
Yes, I am, I have discussed this issue with Mr. Gary, and the, it's connected with the 2020 road program. Because Fay Avenue is a grant money from the state, we can't do any off-site work. We're in the process of working on our 2020 road program, we're working on baits. So that is a portion I'm going to have the contractor take care of while he's on site.
Okay, so, so it is, it is in the works and probably in the next week or two, three weeks?
No, next, next few, couple of months when they start paving. We have not started with the paving, we're working on the concrete work. And then when they start the actual asphalt, that's when they would do, take care of that area.
In the interim, is there a way that we can bring some temporary road dirt over there and, and fill this up so that the water doesn't stand? Because as the weather's getting warmer and warmer, again, my, like I said, my concern at this stage is that we're going to start to breed mosquitoes and bring disease.
That, that's a public works portion of, like, or responsibility, not part of my job. Because my project is when we do the paving, I'm going to handle that portion of it, and I'm not sure exactly what they will do, will be doing the paving.
Okay, so public works, is there a way we can get public works over there to do something temporarily to, to alleviate the, the waters sitting there? I mean, this isn't a small puddle that goes away in an hour or two, this, this is a large, large area of water that sits for days, days and days.
This is a attempt to, Perry, I can ask the public works to look at it and see what we can do in the interim.
I appreciate that, thank you. The other thing I would like to bring up is the cannabis. You know, seventy percent of the voters voted yes, so the majority of our city residents said they wanted it legalized. I don't believe that it's council's position or to sit there and say, should we allow it or not? Because if people want to smoke it in their house or in their yard, they're going to do it anyway. I think that council's position should be, how do we regulate, to the, to the city's best position? The sale of it retail-wise, whether we issue X amount of licenses, what the requirements are for the licensing, and is it a special license or not, I'm not sure.
All those licenses are going to come out of the state, Mr. Gary. This is Councilman Paulistino, the, the licensing is coming out of the state, we're just regulating where it can be sold.
Okay, so that's all, that's, that's the major concern of city council is we're not going to allow the manufacturer or the distribution, which we can do. So you vote that down, but you can't, you have to decide whether you're going to allow a license holder from the state to, to retail it. And how many of those that can retail it in the city, correct?
I'm not following you, but the, the, all licensing is coming out of the state. We, we only get to, i- if we're, we're allowing it in a certain zone or let me backtrack, our permit, our, our discussion so far is where we're discussing is where we're going to allow the sale of it. It's up to those businesses to get licensed.
Right, but could you?
Hold on.
Okay. But you can determine how many, how many retail locations are allowed in the city, correct? Just like you can control how many liquor licenses or how many places can sell alcoholic beverages?
No, we have no, we have no control over that. As far as the liquor license, we, that's based on population. If we are allowed to sell one, we can, but the, we don't control, we can't add them at our will.
So the only thing you can, you can control is where, where the retail locations could be?
Correct.
Okay, all right. That's what I wanted to clarify. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Does it, does the state have some type of formula of how many they're going to allow in a certain area or can there be 100 in this area? Thirty-seven total. So they're going to get 37 licenses and then that just so happens that one, one of those 37 is going to come to Northfield. I, I, I don't know. You know what I mean?
Right.
I, I don't know how. Yeah, or all 37 of them, so. Yeah. Extremely. I mean, we might not even get any out of this, so it, it may be a mute, you know.
There's nobody else on Zoom, but I do have a letter that was written by a Northfield resident who requested that, that it be read into the record. This letter is from Victoria Burke, 32 Putting Green Avenue. She says regarding the sale and use of medical and recreational marijuana. It is my understanding that the city council will be discussing the above-mentioned subject in upcoming meetings. As a former employee of the city of Northfield and as a parent, I feel that I must voice my concerns regarding any proposal that would permit or expand the sale or use of marijuana within our city limits. I believe this would cause a negative impact on our city's overall long-term health, economically, socially, as well as on the well-being and comfort of our residents. The obvious concerns have already had an impact on my family's day-to-day activities, such as, number one, my neighbor periodically smokes his medical marijuana on his front porch. This prohibits my son from enjoying any outdoor activities like riding his skateboard or bike in front of his own home due to the stench and secondhand exposure. Also, for the same reasons indicated, our family is unable to enjoy having the windows in our home open on any day that the weather is favorable. Why should my family's rights to fresh air and outdoor activities be disregarded or limited due to someone else's choice to participate in this behavior? Number two, this will increase the occurrences of exposure and usage by younger, more vulnerable residents and have an unacceptable increase of school dropouts. My son has at least three friends who get enough marijuana from their parents to use several times per day. All of these friends ages 14 to 17 are considering quitting school because they are unable to focus due to their daily use of this substance. Increasing the acceptance and accessibility will only increase these risks to our kids. Number three, this would invite less desirable individuals to move about and/or into our community. You mentioned in the press release that some of the surrounding cities have already or are expected to implement their own ordinances permitting the sale and recreational use of marijuana. Do you really want the city of Northfield to be comparable to Pleasantville? As a resident, I can say that I definitely do not. The short-term economic boost the sale of this product may provide the city would be far outweighed by the overall negative impact on our community and youth. And I hope that you and the council take these long-term effects into consideration. Sincerely, Victoria Burke.
Thank you, Mary. Thank you, Ms. Burke. Anyone else from the public wishing to speak?
No, there's no one else in the Zoom chat who wishes to speak.
With that, we will close the public session. Motion, do I have a motion to adjourn the work session? Second. Second by Mr. Nataro.
It was the first.
Councilmen Oats.
Thank you.
All in favor? Take a brief second just to catch, let me catch up and then we'll start the. Yeah, we're, we're way behind as far as our.
What, what do you mean, council? You mean? Right, that's one of the issues, one of the places. From, from the house. Yeah, I don't think the city would approve something like that. It's when a lot of people, they used to put their gutter lines and they put it through because they have an issue on, on their property itself, and that's allowed. When you have, when you have the front lawn, you have, it's kind of flat. There's, the street is expected to handle that runoff from your house, from the house, from, the amount of water you're going to get from a downspout from the house is minimal comparing to having a sump pump that just keep pumping water in, in the street. And that's part of this, the runoff, like this is what the, the streets are supposed to handle, the, the runoff from your front yard. And the runoff into your front yard, this portion of it is from your house. But that's not a huge amount of runoff because this event goes away after rain stops, the more water is coming through. But when you dump your sump pump, that's a lot of water keeps going. Yep, that's, that's. Right. So.
You, Paul, have you had a conversation with the, the zoning official factors?
I, I did. He said we have nothing in our ordinances to prohibit that. And I looked through the ordinances. I didn't see anything saying you're not allowed to do what they're doing. So, so whoever is, whoever is connected, having pipes that dumps the water into our street, it's not illegal. We have no, nothing in our ordinance is prohibiting them from doing this. No, it's not. If, if, yeah, if we say you cannot dump it there, they're going to privatize it into the sewer and then it's going to be very difficult for us to find out what they're, you know.
Rami, is it, is it a detriment to the road as well? The constant flow of water going, I mean, it's.
It's not only that. I mean, it depends on the look. If, if you have a road that has a nice slope to it, that water is not going to be an issue because it's going to run, it's going to go down to the drainage system, it goes away. The concern is when you have kind of flat roads, you don't have a, a good gutter flow, the water is going to sit there and it's going to become stagnant. So that's, that's where the issue is. But it, we should come up with the solution, like, you know, comprehensive solution, say they're not allowed to do this or find a way for them to connect into the drainage system, not into the sewer system.
Right.
So. I mean, that's a problem. I think it's going to be very difficult to solve, to be honest with you. Yeah, they're supposed to be 50 feet away. That's what the rule says. You're supposed to have a, a stone pit 50 feet away from your house. So by the time you pump it, it doesn't come back into your house. But if you don't have that ability, then you're stuck. Right. Oh, yeah. No, definitely not. That's, I, I think a lot of people, they're doing that now, but we, we just, it's detrimental to the, to the system. I mean, you're overloading a system that you're not supposed to. Yeah, yeah, I do. Yeah.
And our ordinances do prohibit that, but you can't, you can't tell, right?
The only, the only homes you can do that in is the rental homes. If rental and you're doing a re-registration or something and you're always in that home. But other than that, I mean, at the sale of a house, when you, when, when, when they visit, they should be looking for these things.
Yes.
And then, and then you catch it then, but that's the only time we're in the house.
But with Councilman Nataro, it does not stop the homeowner from.
Reconnecting.
They can reconnect, you know. But, I mean, we as a municipality, if we want to check what's going on with that, I mean, it's important for us not to spend the money on this sanitary sewer treatment. It costs a lot of money. I mean, I think we're over like $100,000 last year. Yeah, definitely it's, it's going to add to it, yes.
Even some people have the downspout.
I mean, there's something like. Figure something out.
Try to attack that.
Yeah. Well, Councilman Perry, what you, what we can do is when it's raining, the, we look into the drains, into the sewer line and you see how much water is coming through. I mean, usually normally you might have the pipe one-third full. And if it's raining hard, then you'll see it full to the top. That, you know, it's what's going on at that point. So we have to do investigate, we have to, public works have to investigate the sewer system during heavy rains to see what's the difference. That, that's the other issue, yes.
Can we do some cameras or something like that?
No cameras. You can't go into the cam, you can't tell what, what comes through the flow. The camera would not tell you what kind of water is coming through the system.
That'd be hard to pinpoint.
It's very difficult.
The abundance of flow was, you could, then you'd have to pinpoint it to a house that's doing it.
It, it's very difficult.
It's real difficult.
All right. With that, we'll move on to another public session. Anyone from the public wishing to speak on any subject? Please state your name and address for the record and observe a five-minute time limit per speaker. Anyone from Zoom?
I think they're tired. They weren't done.
I'm going to go with no.
Seeing none, we will close the public session. Resolutions 86 through 89.
Oh, I'm sorry. Second.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Second. Any questions from council? Roll call?
Mr. Deweese, Mrs. Madden, Mr. Nataro.
Yes.
Mr. Perry, Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Utz, Mr. Paulistino.
Yes.
Motion carries for the adoption of the consent agenda.
Ordinances, ordinance. Second.
Was that Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Thank you. Ordinance four of 2021 is an ordinance amending chapter 111 of the city of Northfield municipal code entitled Vehicles and Traffic. This is the second reading. There will be a public hearing after which the matter will be considered for final adoption. Since introduction, the ordinance has been posted in the lobby of City Hall as well as on the municipal website. Any member of the public who requested a copy of the ordinance would have been provided with one free of charge from my office during regular business hours. If approved this evening, the ordinance will be published a final time in the press of Atlantic City on April 24th.
Okay, at this time, we now have a public hearing on ordinance four dash 2021. We're now open to the public. Anyone from the public wishing to speak on ordinance 24 dash 2021 and four dash 2021 alone.
No one in Zoom?
No one in Zoom? We'll now close the public session on the ordinance. And now we need to, oh, we need a roll call.
Mr. Deweese? Mrs. Madden? Mr. Nataro?
Yes.
Mr. Perry? Mr. Smith? Mr. Utz? Mr. Paulistino?
Yes.
Motion carries for the adoption of ordinance four of 2021.
Payment of bills? Roll call.
Mr. Deweese? Mrs. Madden? Mr. Nataro?
Yes.
Mr. Perry? Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Utz? Mr. Paulistino?
Yes.
Motion carries for payment of bills.
And meeting notices.
Our next city council meeting will be May 4th. 6:00 PM work session, regular, regular session will start immediately after.
And do I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Who says second? Okay. That's end of Tara. All in favor? Aye. Aye.
Oh, my gosh. John and I apologize in advance for all of this.